Ready?
Josh, you getting more rest?
We're gonna get, we're gonna start, I guess.
Ready, Ray?
We're ready.
Ready on the left, ready on the right.
Ready on the firing line.
Hi, folks. Good evening. This is the November 2nd, 2016, meeting of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're at the Civic Center, the Community Center in Guilford, Connecticut. For all of you that have not attended before, I'm gonna read some of the pertinent ways that we run the meeting. For the benefit, we will read, first of all, when I get done with this, our secretary will read the legal notice of the meeting. And then after that, each applicant that's on the agenda will be asked to come forward and present their application, and explain to the commission and to the public what is specifically being requested of the subject property. Written comments from town agencies pertaining to any application will then be written to the record if the commission has received any. The commissioners will then ask their qualifying questions, or clarifying questions. The public will then be invited to ask questions they have about the application. I will then ask those in the audience to either, who wish to state an opinion, and whether they're for or against the application, to do so at that time. As this is a public hearing, it will be necessary for those who want to speak to come forward, stand at the mic, and be asked, you're gonna be asked to identify yourself and your address, please. At the conclusion of all statements from the public and the applicant, I will close the public hearing on that, on the specific application. The applicant and the public will then be free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, at which time the commission will discuss each applicant, application under consideration, and try to reach a decision. Each applicant will be notified in writing of the decision of this commission. The applicant and/or any agreed party with legal standing will have the right to appeal this decision to superior court within a statutory timeframe if they so desire. All decisions reached at this meeting will be available to the public the next day, either by visiting or calling Planning and Zoning Commission after 9:30 a.m. Seated this evening for the meeting are the following commissioners: Al, over there, he doesn't have a, Alan Brown. He doesn't have a name tag yet, but he's new, and he's gonna get one very quickly. Walt Corbier, myself, Tom Cost, Richard Bauer.
Richard Wallace.
Richard Wallace, Ray Bauer.
Ray Bauer.
Rich Meyer.
Rich Meyer, Phil. No, you're not seated tonight.
Uh, probably not.
Yeah, you're not. And Josh. Frank DeAndrea's absent, George Kroll, Tom Planter, Reggie Reed, Planning and Zoning Enforcement Officer, Liz Brewer, and our Peter, our photographer is Peter Schultz. Having said that, let's read the legal notice.
Legal notice of the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on November 2nd, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., at the location being Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, 32 Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, in the Monocotuck Room on the second floor, for the following purposes. Petition from the Economic Development Commission to amend Section 273-47, Site Maintenance Outside Display of Merchandise. Mary Beaman, First Church of Christ Scientist, 49 Park Street, Map 4, Lot 4, Special Permit to Allow Additional Use of Church Auditorium and Accessory Rooms for Performing Art Productions, Section 273-79. Soundview Road LLC, Soundview Road, Map 42, Lots 118-4, 5 and 6, Zone I-2, Special Permit, Coastal Area Management Site Plan, Construction of a 12,212 square foot building and pet boarding facility, Sections 273-91, 273-97, and 273-79. Kevin Murphy, Pools by Murphy, 320 Vineyard Point Road, Map 5, Lot 33, Zone R-5, Coastal Area Management Site Plan Modification to Construct and Attach a 10-foot by 12-foot In Ground Granite Spa to an Existing Pool, 273-91. Show Cause Hearing to Consider Rescinding Site Plan Application Approval for MAC Management, 299 Long Hill Road, Map 73, Lot 10, as shown on Schematic Site Plan, SCG, Southern Connecticut Gas Emergency Response Center, dated 6/8/16, Revised 6/2016, and Approval Granted on July 20th, 2016. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Office of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard, and written communication will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 12th day of October, 2016, Tom Cost, Chairman.
Thank you. I do wanna ask Georgia a question. Is it appropriate to use, do the last thing, the show cause hearing, seeing if they're requesting continuation?
Yep.
And just get that out of the way?
Yeah.
Is there anybody here that's here for that particular? Do you have a problem if we, it's, they're asking to continue the meet, continue until 12:07? Do you have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. All right, so, is there anybody else that would like to comment about this? So, we're gonna just, we'll-
Make a motion and we'll take it until 12:07.
Okay. Second, please?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
You have one alternate standing down. You probably need to make one of the other alternates stand down. You have eight people seated.
Alan's seated.
Alan, I asked Alan if he's seated.
George is not?
George is not.
Okay, good. Thanks, sir.
Okay. First up, this is the second hearing. William Thompson, AIA and Associates LLC, Architect.
Good evening. For the record, Will Thompson, 28, South Bear Street, Architect. Here tonight, also with Tom Stevens, Engineer, and John Cunningham, Landscape Design. This is our second meeting on this application. This is a quest of modification of existing site plan, special permit, and CAM. We're looking to do improvements to, basically landscape and exterior improvements to 506 Whitfield Street. Just to familiarize us again with the map, I'll just locate a few things, and I was just gonna touch on a couple adjustments we made, based on some comments from the last meeting, to locate. So, here's Whitfield Street. Here's Seaview Terrace. Here are the two buildings, which we're not doing anything to in this request. This is the parking area, which has two town roads over it. There's an access, private access driveway, and walkway along the edge of Sluse Creek. Basically, what we're looking to do is to pave the town roads to town specification, and pave the parking lot to reduce the dust, add a few more plantings, and soften, basically make this accessway still workable for vehicle, but much more pedestrian-friendly, and include, basically, an ADA accessible curb cut to the Marina side, to make that a better passageway. In addition, we are having a small, basically garden pergola structure up on kind of a bare area of the property. I distributed a sheet to show a little dimension. Originally, we were looking at having a pavilion also, but we decided to pull that out. It seemed like, just keep it simple, just provide this landscape amenity. Basically, the idea of the pergola is it's gonna have grapes growing on it, so it's a landscape feature. I also did a perspective where I took, we took an existing, basically a photo from the neighbor, this neighbor to the, this neighbor right here, who had some concerns about the sightlines now that the site's been cleaned up. So, what I did is, the photo was taken right here, and I put the object in in perspective here, and I have a copy of this if you wanted also, to just get us a sense. Now, this is where the existing two trees. John Cunningham will go over the trees. This tree's getting removed. It's sick, and it's also, obviously, a fairly big object, so I thought that would be helpful. The other thing, Tom Stevens added, called out view lane here, 12-foot view lane on this side, I think it was Kevin's, if you remember. And that's really, there's a couple upgrades to do with John's work, so I'm gonna hand this over to John Cunningham. Thought we'd just cover the base things, and then, any questions?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
The passageway that you're trying to soften up.
What was the material you had indicated you were gonna use for that?
Initially?
Yes, the material, you know, the walking material or the-
All right, so this is just going to be-
No, no, the actual, the road, the small road between, that, what is that gonna be?
Permeable pavers.
Permeable pavers.
And in fact, we've checked since, we can use the same paver type that we've used elsewhere, but in a permeable version. And it's basically just, it's set up to be just wide enough so vehicle could get in if you needed to, but it's really designed for walking.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. John?
Good evening. My name's John Cunningham, CDC Landscape Design. These are photographs.
From our last meeting? We've since changed a little bit of the landscape character, the pavilion, I'm calling it pergola terrace that Will just went over, is right here. The trees that are seen in those photographs, there's one here, it's a large poplar. There's one here, it's a large choke cherry. We're suggesting to take those both down. They're not in great shape. This one's full of poison ivy. Would you like to remove both of them? We've eliminated the tree, the fastiget trees from this side of the property. We've kept the fastiget or columnar tree, just so everyone knows, a fastiget piece of material grows like my pen. It's an upright. It's not a spreader, okay? But it's used in landscape design to create scale or size of an area. So, I have one here on the side, I have one here down front, and I have another one up here. These are all on exact centers, okay? The pergola's here. There's a flat, in-ground stone patio. Yet to be determined whether it's gonna match the, if everyone's been down there, you see that we use the concrete paver in front of the building, and at the rear of the building. That paver could be used up here, it could be bluestone. It's not gonna be seen, it's in-ground up here. We've also used two above-ground concrete planters. We had them on the last plan. We've removed two of them, we've kept two here. We're gonna have a little dwarf apple tree on the patio. The planter and the apple tree will probably not exceed the height of the pergola itself. They'll all be about the same height, okay? There'll be some large slabs of granite that are gonna lead from the parking lot back up to about existing grids, about a four-foot change, and you walk over to the patio. My slashed line here, this will be a planting bed of low ground cover, probably with some ornamental grasses in, it'll be very low, all right? The rest of the area will remain as is, just really grass, or like a conservation mix. It's not great lawn, but it's gonna be maintained once a week. To answer Will's question, the, I think it's back on this, on the next page here. This was our first go-around on the walkway that was shown from Whitfield Street back to the parking lot, okay? It's changed from my plan a little bit, it's widened a little bit, so a vehicle could make it down here. It's gonna be the same pavers we used in front of the building, but as opposed to being a interlocking concrete paver that is impervious, they're gonna be permeable pavers, match the same color, but is gonna allow water to move back through it, and vehicles to be able to drive back down, okay?
That's sort of my main question, but last time you mentioned that, right now, technically, it's an impermeable surface in a lot of area, in the back.
Well, right- Are you talking about the parking lot?
Parking lot has been, is largely considered-
You wanna respond, because as far as the actual area?
Yeah, sure. Just in terms of the landscaping, though, we've got-
Well, the landscaping, this is considered a permeable walkway right now. It's just processed, yes, it's considered processed stone, which is permeable.
Well, zoning is considered impermeable in zoning.
Oh.
Right, that's sort of, that's the little shrimp.
Well, now, I apologize, now we're-
In real life-
In real life, it's, in real life, water does move through it.
Impermeable by our standards currently.
But what we are moving to is a concrete paver that is 100% permeable. It sits on a 12-inch crushed stone base, so water moves through. The pavers are set with about a quarter-inch gap between them, with crushed stone between it, so no, all the water will now surcharge into the ground.
So, the permeability overall will increase significantly?
Will increase. If this is considered impervious, that it will increase, yes, correct.
You mentioned that enough space for an automobile to pass by there, is that for just one car or what?
Yes, just one.
Can you have one going each way?
No. Because it's only about, it's only about-
So, it's a one-way street, and it's only for one car at a time? Is that right?
I think, I think it's been planned where a vehicle could move down there.
I'm thinking about emergency vehicles.
That's what we're thinking about.
Yeah.
So, we're not thinking of two-way traffic. It's anywhere from probably 10 to 11 feet wide. Just to respond about emergency, I met with Fire Department before we presented this plan, and they typically use, sorry, John. They typically use this side or this side. They don't use this as emergency access. They're very clear about that.
Could they?
Well, the way we have it set up is, an ambulance or something could, but it was not requested. Typical fire apparatus would not be using it, we were told. Okay. And if you, if you wanna get the real size, and I bring this back to Tom Stevens, we can give you this, the dimension of what's left, so that a vehicle can still pass. Please do that.
John, can you give more on the plan?
No, any other questions?
No. The rest of the permeability questions go to Mr. Stevens, thanks.
For the record, I'm Tom Stevens, Professional Engineer and Land Surveyor, office at 141 Durham Road in Madison. The width of this driveway, walkway is 10 feet. It's pervious pavers, just because it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us, it actually helps us, because it is, as John mentioned, 100% pervious. So, 10 feet, traffic flow could go either way, but certainly not both ways at the same time.
Why, why is that, sir?
To have it both ways at-
Why you have the limit to just one-way traffic?
The current width with the building has never allowed, I've squeezed-
Are you answering this question?
Yeah, I've squeezed my car through there. It's not, there's never gonna be a way to-
I think the goal, could I just ask?
Yeah.
The goal here is to turn this into a pedestrian walkway, basically.
It's to make it much more pedestrian friendly.
Okay, then where would the parking be if it's pedestrian?
Just, just let me answer one thing at a time, just a minute. So, right now, we have a situation where, if anything, cars tend to drive through here fairly rapidly, and it's dangerous for the restaurant and for people walking. We also wanted to improve the access to the Marina side, which connects to the small restaurant. So, the idea was, let's in essence make it a pedestrian-first kind of way. It's, it's a private drive right now, and still allow vehicles to pass when needed, but to calm, basically using calming techniques by the Serpentine path for vehicles. It has, it has no impact on parking.
That's what I was gonna ask you, where would be the parking?
Parking access is-
Pedestrian traffic.
Parking access is basically through the lot, the way it was set up with the original approved plan.
The existing pillars are about 14 feet, pillar to pillar, so it's, you have to fold mirrors to pass at that narrow width, so it was never intended, as of this application, to be any more than one-way traffic.
You think that's a good thing?
I do.
Okay.
Just the rest, in terms of the paving of the actual parking spaces.
Yes.
Currently, as you know, it's technically impermeable in several areas, but then also it's, you know, dirty and dusty and others, and-
Yes.
And probably meets our standards for permeability, but under this new setup, it's not clear to me how much pervious versus impervious surface is truly changing, both by our regs and, as we mentioned, sort of in real life, since we have this technical definition that messes with-
What's happening now is, there's an edge of pavement stops, it's paved from Seaview Terrace to here, it's paved, just the width of Dock Lane, and the handicapped spaces are proposed to be paved. They're currently processed stone. A meeting with Jim Portley, we discussed the truth of the processed stone versus pavement, and we thought a reasonable change would be from a .75 runoff coefficient to a .9. So, I took that difference of .15 times the whole, I think it's 30,000 square foot surface, 33,894 square feet, and applied the difference between .9 and .75, and came up with an additional runoff per inch of rain of 424 cubic feet, and that's what sized the subsurface infiltration basin. It was to offset the difference with one-inch rainfall. And we mentioned last part of the public hearing, that the one-inch rainfall event is 90% of the storms are one-inch or less.
So, these, are these roads gonna be paved by town DPW?
No. No, they're, they're, roads are gonna be paved to town standards, as far as depths of pavement.
You're gonna bring a team in to do it? You're not gonna pay the town to do it themselves, per se?
And it's very, it's very delicate grades here, so you have to be very specific, staking it out and doing it correctly. It's half a percent at the worst, and it's two-thirds of a percent, and then, then the rest of it has a lot more slope to it. It's very flat, it's very critical that we get the pavement right.
But we are gonna end up with a lot more impervious surface in the end.
Yes, yes.
And what about when you get a heavy snowstorm, you're predicting that is what you're, how are you gonna get the storm, where is it gonna go?
I don't know the current pattern. I think it's probably pushed down to the right of the dumpster, I would think, where we know.
There's enough room down there?
There's a lot of room down there, I guess.
I have a question. Walter, you mentioned a lot more impervious surface. Based on zoning, that's not really accurate. Based on zoning, you're having a similar amount of impervious, and in fact, we're less, we're lessening, we're basically improving the coefficient of-
Based on our current definition of-
But that's your zoning commission, correct? So, that's what we're ruling on.
But in terms of water actually running off?
It should be net increase of .15%. But, but, but it's being picked up with that infiltration basin, to do with the engineering side. I just wanna make sure we're clear on our definitions, because we're talking about two different-
Correct, yeah.
Sets of definitions?
Yes, and with, in terms of the crushed stone, everything that is not handicapped is crushed stone for the-
In the approved plan?
In the, in the current plan.
Yes, well, except for the existing town road that's already paved.
Right. Town road is paved, handicapped-
Will be paved.
Spaces will be paved, and then everything else will be crushed stone.
Or it's called processed stone. It's really processed, it's very fine, so that the ADA paths will work, so.
So, what we've got, then ultimately, like, for instance, if, if we were before the Inland Wetlands Commission, we would be seeing a serious uptick in the amount of runoff from this total surface.
Why are you bringing up inland ones? This is coastal.
Correct, this is coastal, which means that the Inland Wetlands Commission does not actually have jurisdiction at all, so we're the only, we're actually the only ones reviewing this, because-
Well, you and DEP, John Goucher, did review.
Yes, DEP will also see it.
Yeah, and they have, and they've looked at it.
So, DEP is fine with us?
Yes.
We already got-
I entered this exhibit last meeting, John Goucher's email.
And ultimately, our total increased runoff is .15?
Times, times this area.
Times this area.
Times 33,000 square feet.
So, it's a 15%?
Little bit more, 15 over 90. But it's captured.
15 over 90, right?
And there's that, that increase is captured right here.
Okay, and that's captured.
One inch is totally captured. Two inches, it'll-
Right, it does.
It'll do what it does. It's- Basically becomes a level spreader, the area beyond, get over the edge, correct? Yeah.
That whole lip will, well, it's a little bit of a swale, so mostly, it'll mostly stay exactly where it is today. It's running down here today.
Yeah, that's, I mean, obviously, no matter what you do, that'll, I mean, I'm sure you could come up with a way to make it run somewhere else, but-
Not easily, this one.
But, yeah. All right, that's a complete answer. Thank you.
I have a general information question. Is this being done in preparation to associate this with any other trail system that possibly is being considered for this area?
It's really, the goal here is just simply to make it more attractive and clean up the site. Also, make access to the restaurant work a little better, make that access a little safer, and lessen the dust for the neighborhood. And at the same time, the town, so no, to answer your initial question, not that I'm aware of, no, there's no connection to any other site, it's just to do with goals of this location.
I'm gonna, I'll go with that.
Two questions, I think. If I understand right, you're gonna re-surface the existing town road?
To, to the town spec, and it's shown on the detail sheet.
So, is that-
So, the town actually gets improvement of those rightways.
And you do it for protection, they always, I've been in Public Works for a number of years, use the old chip seal program on most of your, most of the town roads and-
I know Tom and the town engineer reviewed it several times in preparation.
Yeah, there's a misconception about overlaying the road, because overlaying what's there is gonna leave the puddles that are there. So, we're gonna take the road, take it down, let's say six or eight inches, and build up the sub-base and the pavement courses, to get rid of the wrinkles. So, it's a, we think it's a reconstruction of the top six or eight inches. Jim Portley said, dig some test pits, if the sub-base is fine, we're not gonna make you go down 18 inches, and we build it, we'll just redo what has to be reconstructed.
There were a couple letters that we gave.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. This first one is dated November 1st, it's from Kevin McGee, the environmental planner of the town. "The applicant is proposing to pave the existing town road and parking lot, create an accessible access at existing driveway to Marina area, and add landscaping features. A crushed stone dentation basin has been proposed to handle the increased storm-water runoff. The work being conducted could impact the adjacent coastal resources if erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly maintained. In order to make sure the coastal resources are protected during the construction process, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The town of Guilford, zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. And two, additional silt fencing should be installed adjacent to the septic system upgrade." Do you have any problems with any of those? They're already included on your, and then this last memo is from Dennis Johnson, it's dated today. He is the Director of Health. "The applicant proposed landscaping, parking, and road upgrades do not conflict with the septic system facilities currently existing on site."
To answer your question, we have no, no issues with the additional silt fence at the top of the northeast corner of the property.
So, then, so then the bottom line is?
What you're basically doing is you're paving the two lots, and this easement or this driveway, or whatever you wanna call it, no, we're trying to discourage people from driving down it, sort of making it so that it's mostly a walkway, and it looks better, and it's nicer. And only use it under a necessity, which I can't see why it would be, because you've got plenty of roads to go through. So, actually, the only thing that I would question, and it's probably not a fair answer to say, but I'm not crazy about blacktop, but in any case, it's everywhere anyway, but the point is, it's not good for the water, but it's, obviously, it'd be more expensive to put all pavers in there, so. But anyway, the reason, they keep talking about this little driveway here, I can understand why that makes sense. You don't really need it to drive through, but you still have it available if it ever became necessary. But it's mostly for people walking, they wanna enjoy the area, so I see that paving a good thing. Anybody else on the commission at this point?
Questions?
Questions from, questions only from people in the audience, questions? Sure, questions, yep, come on up and just talk into the mic.
Hi, my name is Wayne Cutress, I live at twenty-three Seabou Terrace, and I have a few questions. Basically, the, this handout that you all received is the view from my patio out onto the marsh, and so, my concerns are, first of all, this area here is already raised up four feet, and then the height of this, in this, Mr. Cunningham showed me that this won't affect my view very much, but I have another concern, and that is of flying debris. I'm not sure what this is zoned, the zoned use for this property is, but it seems like this is gonna have a staircase, and then it's gonna be used for people to sit and to socialize or whatever. But it's, it's right, it's right by my home, the back of my home. Now, if, in a heavy wind or a heavy storm, how am I protected from flying debris into my home? That was, you know, my first concern. Also...
What sort of flying debris is that?
Well, are there gonna be chairs and tables here?
Oh, okay.
How is it gonna be used? And then, are those chairs and tables gonna be anchored? And also, how is this pergola and the plantings and whatnot that are attached to it, how are they gonna be? How, are they secure, am I safe? This is, the backside of my house is right here, this is mostly windows, so I'm concerned about that. Also, the height of the plantings, they're gonna be here and here, I know they're gonna be narrow, but how high are they gonna grow? And, you know, basically, that's my biggest concern is, is, and also, will it be, will there be electricity, will it be lit at night? Is that something that's gonna be considered or added later? I wanna know that now, so those are my concerns.
There's no plan for additional lighting this time? As far as the, the pergola itself, it, it's, it needs to be built to the current codes. This part of the site is, is a non-velocity part of the flood zone, so it's set up, so it opposes flotation as well as meeting the building code, so it'll be quite secure. If, if the occupant plans to bring some furniture out there, that stays out there, I have no problem with saying it's gonna be anchored. I don't see any problem with that. And then as far as the trees, John, do you wanna comment on the height? Like maybe what the planted height is and the likely mature height?
We listed the trees as a five-inch caliper, festiget tree, probably gonna be tulip. At five-inch caliper, which is measured a foot off the ground, installed, the trees would probably be sixteen, eighteen feet tall when they're first installed. They're probably gonna get to a mature size of maybe, in this environment, they're not gonna go to full size. They're probably gonna be, years from now, maybe thirty feet, okay? They're still gonna be tight, meaning if they're thirty feet tall, they're gonna be six feet wide, so they're not gonna be very wide. From a landscape standpoint, the stairs are gonna be large slabs of granite, that probably weigh in excess of a ton each of the slabs, they're not gonna go anywhere in the wind. The ground cover and the planting that are next to the steps are not gonna go anywhere. The planters themselves, full of soil, are gonna weigh in excess of two thousand pounds, probably. The grapevines that are used, these are gonna be a little planters also. The grapevine, everyone realizes, is gonna tie around the structure, so even in a big wind, I don't see any quote landscape elements moving off of here. The furniture, we have a viewing platform down here, Charles, is the furniture down there attached?
It's not.
Not attached. We also have furniture behind the building, I'm gonna guess, if it wasn't attached, if there was a storm coming, I'm sure this furniture's gonna go back inside, and I'm sure if there was furniture back up in here, we're probably taking it out also, if it wasn't attached.
So you, you wouldn't be averse to a restriction on any additional lighting?
No, we're not looking to, looking to have it...
We're not proposing, you know, we, in fact, we were asking earlier, we want to add lighting, and we said no.
So that condition would be fine?
Yep.
Can you tell me the, the points of north, or south, east, west, and that?
My arrow goes north.
North, okay, all right.
Okay.
Just curious, from your...
From your house, sir, to the, to this pergola, how, how many feet would you say that is, or can we measure that?
You can measure, maybe, uh, forty or fifty yards, I would say?
A hundred and fifty feet.
And then, the other thing that I didn't hear addressed is, and still my concern, is this, is it a place for people to go and eat after they go to the restaurant that's down here? I, I don't understand the use of it. Why is it gonna be there? Is it for the restaurant, is it for the employees of the building, and is that residential property, or is that commercial property?
Hundred and eighty-three feet, one eighty-three feet.
Okay, thanks.
We, basically, it's to make it more attractive. It's not really thought of as something that's gonna be used in any dramatic fashion, it's why I removed the pavilion, it felt like it was, if anything, reading as more than it needs to be. It's just this fairly bare area, we're trying to add some features and some scale.
What did you say about the fact that there's this pergola?
Well, the pergola, the way it would be set up is these posts would be a rigid moment connection, I mean, it's gonna meet the building code, and based on the zone, it's, it's gonna be based on the current, you know, two thousand and twelve version of the international building code.
That's a point that I didn't think about, about the possibility of major storm like a couple of them we've had. In the future, he said you're gonna have grapevines growing around it.
Right.
Want those grapevines to grow, and they cover that pergola, that changes...
Yeah, you count that in your windage calculation.
You've got a real serious problem with windage.
I, I've designed a number of things that are coastal, including the boardwalks at Jacob's Beach and Chittenden, so I'm aware of some of those factors.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
For the...
Sorry, go ahead.
Let's, let's, if you want, I'll hold your question.
Yeah, yeah.
Comments now from the audience? For or against the, this application as it stands now?
I still don't feel like I've answered what the use is. Is it part of the use of the building, or is it a use of the public, or is it a use of the, or is it a use of the restaurant? What is it gonna be used for? And is it zoned to be used that way?
So could I, could I ask a question? If I, if this application was to put a statue there, where, you know, just, to me, it's just, it's something they're putting, that's a big open field, and, and they're trying to give...
It's like, when I put some garden elements, it's a perfectly reasonable length of height, right?
All right, so to address that, the property that exists there, the Rothberg Institute has a huge rock statue in front of it. The gentleman who owns that property has stone hedges in his backyard, and now we're building a pergola. I'm concerned is where this begins and where this ends. Right now, I've accepted, I accept what's put there, but I don't wanna come walking out of my house one day, and then there's a, there's a stone hedges there, or a rock feature that hasn't been mentioned, because this has happened in this town in the past, so now I'm concerned about it. Also, I still haven't heard you answer me, is that residential, or is that commercial? What is that property, what's it approved for?
I can't answer that, that's up to the...
I can answer that question. The, the portion of the property where the pergola is proposed is in a residential zone, as is most of, most if not all of the parking lot. So what you have here is a commercial non-conforming use in the residential zone, namely the parking area. You can't, you can't establish or create or put commercial uses in residential zones, unless they're already there, and therefore they're non-conforming. So the question, I guess before the commission, that maybe this gentleman's asking is, is this landscape, are these landscape features, do they constitute some kind of expansion of a commercial activity or commercial use into a residential zone? I don't know exactly what was there before, I don't, I don't know if there's any kind of, I don't believe there's any parking there, but I could be wrong. I know that there's a septic system there, or at least there, there was a septic system there. So the question, I guess, would be, is this, are these landscape features, do they constitute an expansion of the commercial use into a residential zone? Normally, we don't think of landscaping as being a use, you know? Usually landscaping is seen as a positive feature, even if it's part of a commercial activity adjacent to a residential zone, but it's ultimately a question of interpretation by the commission, is, are these improvements, do they constitute an expansion of the commercial activity into a residential zone?
Well, potentially, could this be used as a dining area for the restaurant during the summer? You know, we say no, but if it's there and someone goes over and starts eating some hot dogs, or whatever it is they serve at Pa's Place, then potentially it could become a dining area for a commercial establishment.
Restaurant is approved for a specific number...
Of seats, you know, based on a, a, a specific plan. So I would say, no, it could not become part of the restaurant. I mean, clearly, though, if somebody buys a hot dog at the restaurant, and they walk back here, and they sit on the grass, or if there's chairs, and they sit in the chair, you know, is somebody gonna call the zoning enforcement officer and, you know, complain about it, you know?
Well, I think you have to look at it...
What are the practical...
Reasonably, for example, a lot of residential properties here, people have pergolas, or other kind of buildings on their property, and they have cookouts, and they eat hot dogs there, so...
Correct.
I don't see where this is a lot different, unless they're telling people to go here and then eat out there, okay?
So, so let me, let me understand what you just said.
That's a residential...
You're, you're genuinely saying you don't understand that a pergola that potentially could be somewhere to eat, next to a restaurant, is the same as someone having a pergola in their backyard? Are you actually saying that?
I actually am, which...
Wow, okay, good.
Because it's the same thing, people have the same type of pergolas, if not larger, landscape the same way in residential lots. They're in my neighborhood, they have guests over, and they go out and eat there in the evening, have cocktails and dinner. I don't see where this is that much different. Okay.
George, are they charged for those hot dogs that they go to those...
No, they don't.
George, I, I guess, I'm, I'm confused, because he's also concerned about sort of like what might develop in the future. I don't know the status of this applicant's violations right now.
Violation?
Yeah, currently, we have, Mark sent a letter to them, which I'm not aware what the status of it is right now. First, I'm asking staff, I'm, I'm asking staff this question. This is, so there's a, it seems that Mark sent a, a letter of a one-seven-four violation, and I don't know, I haven't, I haven't received that letter, and I don't know what the status of it is.
It isn't for this property.
But we haven't heard about it at all.
It's for the other, four-eighty-five Woodfield street.
And what was, what's the content of the...
Different application?
This is off track. It's a separate piece of property, it has nothing, we can do nothing, it's a commission. This is a separate piece of property, we have to look at this as this property.
Understood. The reason that I'm asking about it is because this is special permit, right? And the behavior of an applicant is, is actually important to us in some sense, because our, our enforcement capacity is only X, right? And it only has a certain level of strength, right? And we actually have not been notified about the current status of this applicant's...
The little cottage next to, or the garage property?
Well...
That's a, it is a separate property, and let me just, let me just say one thing, we do not judge applications based on our assessment of the character of the applicant or anything like that, we base it on the merits of the application itself, and whether or not it conforms to the zoning requirements.
And if it's not outstanding violations...
On other properties?
On other properties, we should not review those.
First of all, that is, it's not a zoning violation, and you would not be in, if I understand what you're referring to...
Understood.
It's the flood damage prevention ordinance, which, Mark Damiani, assistant town engineer, just to clarify with the rest of the commission, he made a finding about that application, about that project, and that's currently under appeal by the property owner, and it has nothing to do with the zoning.
And that's currently under appeal, it's not just...
To the, to the building code board of appeals.
Building code board of appeals.
Correct. The, I don't know this, all the specifics of the circum, of the application, or where it stands, it's not, as I, I think several people have said, it's not pertinent to this particular application, but I'm sure that if you would like, you could inquire with the engineering department, and they can give you all the details about where it stands and what it's all about. But the question here that we were just debating is, I think as, as Ray was starting to talk to, this is a question of interpretation that you have to make when you review this application. Is this activity that's proposed here, the pergola and the other landscaping that's related to it, an expansion of the commercial use of this property? This property has two commercial uses. The restaurant is part of that, and the office building is also part of it. The buildings in both cases are within the commercial zones, but the parking areas are in the residential zones. And that's been the case for many, many years, associated with this use and previous uses as well.
George, I got a question.
Yeah, I'm not really clear what the applicant said this is intended to be used for, but my impression was that the folks that work in the office building would, on their lunch break, go outside and sit there and relax and enjoy the scenery, or something like that. So i- if that were the case, if that, that was the intention of this, would this be an expansion of the commercial use of the residential area by intending it to be used by the people who work in the commercial building, but the actual structure is in a residential area? Would that be that?
Well, you of course don't regulate the activity of the people who work there, what they do, and where they go, and where they might sit, or whatever, it's not something that's subject to your jurisdiction, what you regulate are the building and physical improvements that are being made. So, your question is basically the same as my question to you, which is, you're the ones that have to make that decision.
Right, I know.
Do you consider the pergola and any of the other improvements that are being proposed in a residential zone, an expansion of the commercial use of this property, a part of which is non-conforming? The parking area and other, other components are in the residential zone, they're not expanding any of the parking area, they wouldn't be permitted to expand the parking area to the extent that it's in a residential zone, because that would, that would be an expansion of the commercial use. The question here is, this is a little bit different, the things that are actually being proposed to be built are landscape elements, not normally things that we associate with a commercial activity. But again, that's your call, you have to decide whether you think those things constitute an expansion of the commercial use.
Well, I have one more thing to remember.
If anyone's seen the viewing platform down here, there is a picnic table and four or five benches down there, no one has sat there yet from Pa's Place. We have no problem in saying there will be no tables up here, there might be a couple of Adirondack chairs, it's not supposed to be a destination point from Pa's Place, so we have no problem in saying, have none, there could be no tables or meals.
Just one other thing I'd like to add in response to you, I mean, I think, if anything, the owners are trying to be good neighbors, and we're not planning, and we cannot add things if we don't come back for modification of our site plan. So this is what we're proposing we wanna do, and we're before you to review that. So I don't see suddenly something appearing, you know? And, and the other thing I would like to add is, everything that was on our original application, we have done. And in fact, I mean, the one thing we're outstanding waiting for... And in fact, I mean, the one thing we're outstanding waiting for is to do with a kayak launch, which is working its way through the, the, and Army Corps. As we said in the original meeting, we're gonna file for that. So, we, we've made the point of continuing with that as well, so.
So, I've got a question for you. I'm really trying to get my hands around this in a, in a meaningful way. So, the only, the only reason that the applicant is occupying this space, both the office and the restaurant, is for commercial purposes. That's the only reason. And they're expanding into a residential area for a reason. How is this not an expansion of commercial use if their only purpose is to use this area commercially?
I don't understand your question.
So, this is, it's going in the residential portion of this lot, and so, it was intended for a residential use, to beautify someone's backyard or to-
We're trying to improve the way the mound-
It has a septic system in it.
It was. I mean, it's not very complicated. We're trying to add some elements, some landscape elements, some trees, make it look a little more attractive. We're trying to be careful so we don't obstruct view lines, which actually didn't exist before we started cleaning up the site, because there was a junkyard back there. I, I don't, I mean, I'm sort of surprised on some level, this is fairly straightforward.
And I agree with you. It's just that whenever we're potentially imposing on a residential property owner, I like to dot my i's and cross my t's.
This space has been used commercially for most of our memory, just so we know. That whole area has been used commercially on an ongoing basis. There's no change in that.
I don't disagree with you, Will.
Yeah.
I just want to be very aware of residential people that are adjacent to commercial areas.
I, I-
If I lived there, I would want the people who sit at this table to be very careful about what happened to me. And I'm trying to be sensitive to this gentleman. That's all I'm doing.
As a-
Good.
So, can I add one more statement? Based on the information that was just given about the limited amount of seats, if that's written into the agreement, then I see no reason to oppose that. My view is that if there was twenty tables and chairs out there, then that would become a cafeteria lunch-style area, potentially parties and whatnot can use that while they're using the launch and other things. But if it's limited to three chicks, Adirondack chairs, and one bench or whatever you just said, I, I won't oppose that.
And you guys can live with that, too?
Yes.
Then we don't have a problem. I'm good. As long as he's happy, I'm okay.
Anybody else? Anybody else out there?
You still concerned about the lighting restriction, or do you feel?
That was, that was, I, my understanding is there won't be lighting.
We've not, we're not adding a light.
So, then, as long as, you know, as long as-
Okay.
One dumb question. Obviously, did this have to go before design review?
We already, we did that.
No bad thoughts?
We did that before the first meeting.
Okay. Someone move to close this portion?
I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Joseph Bergen. This is a second public hearing. Sixty-five Highland Avenue, map nine, lot forty-one, ours, zone, R2, special permit.
My name is Joe Bergen. My firm is Joseph Bergen Architect. You're remembering from two weeks ago, I can tell.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, I'm here on behalf of my clients, who are the new owners of the house at sixty-five Highland Avenue. Shall I retell the story?
Wait.
Okay, so-
For the record, from Dennis Johnson, did you happen to see that?
Uh, you can read it into the record if you like.
Sure. It's dated today, that the applicant's proposed building floor plan modifications restore the previously approved floor plan, thereby conforming to the original conditions of approval and complying with the onsite septic system limitations unique to the lot. It is recommended that the applicant's special permit modifications be approved.
And they've already removed internally the floor, a bunch of other things, right now.
That's right. There is currently a cease and desist order on the property, which I believe is removed once there's a building permit, which they have. And, and they've encountered quite a bit of rot in the first floor floor joists, and so they're in the process of replacing those floor joists.
They don't, they don't need our approval to start going through the floor and everything, right?
No.
They didn't need our approval?
He was taking out the insulation where it wasn't supposed to be. I have a memo on this property, yeah, which kind of explains what was and what's, what is proposed.
We've been through this a few times.
Okay. Any questions about this from the other members of the commission?
This is pretty straightforward.
What you basically are doing is you're taking the house that originally wasn't supposed to have done in it, done, so it's not meeting the standards of what it's supposed to meet. And when the new owner bought it, he wants to put it back to its original.
Well, no, the original did not comply with zoning-
No, I didn't mean the original. I mean, what, what he was supposed to do, what the, what the plan said.
With the original approval, the original special permit granted, yes.
Just trying to get it back to what meets the regulations of the town.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a language thing. The way the, the, the conditions of the special permit approval were written, strictly speaking, our plan didn't conform, so we're here to just change the language.
One of the things that we get, one of the three bedrooms in that, too.
Well, actually, specifically, it's to have two bedrooms on the second floor.
Two bedrooms, that's better.
Right.
Three bedrooms, you are in office.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Any more questions? Any comments, pro or for or against this application? Hearing, hearing none? Someone make a-
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Thank you. Next up is Mary Beaman for First Church of Christ Scientist at forty-nine Park Street.
Hi, I'm Mary Beaman, thirty-nine Boston Street, representing First Church of Christ Scientist at forty-nine Park Street. We have a, before you a special permit application. We're looking to fill our coffers a little bit to keep the lights on, and we tested the waters this summer a little bit with putting on a production by Madison Lyric Stage, Avita, and they have come back to us looking to rent our space for a few more productions going forward. And so, in talking with Reggie, we thought it probably would behoove us to get a special permit, since we are changing the use from a hundred percent church use to some performing arts performances. Any questions?
So, potentially, are you going to, and I know you can't see the future, but is this like five times a year, or are you looking to like rent it out where it would be used every week?
Right now, it's probably going to be three or four times a year with this particular group. For the last twenty-five years, we've had a Christmas concert on tree lighting night. That's a once-a-year thing that, that we do. We have had other people use the space for music recitals, piano recitals, violin recitals. There've been a couple of times where area choruses have done a concert there over the years. Guilford Keeping Society years ago did an antique wedding dress fashion show. So, we, you know, we've, we've rented it out for various community activities over the years, but I think with Madison Lyric Stage in particular, they are looking for kind of a new home for their productions.
So, the reason I'm asking is that our friends in Branford gave permission to the puppet theater to go back into business, but there was no parking. And is parking ever an issue at your place?
No, no. Most of the times that the performances are going on, it's not during the hours of the library. There's plenty of parking around the green, town hall, library, various offshoots of the street, so, so far, it's not been a, in fact, even this summer, Avita was going on right during the craft fair expo.
So, there'd be no negative impacts as far as you could see?
No.
Good.
One thing that I don't think I put in the application that was a thought that came to me this evening, you'll remember years ago when the library was expanded, we had sort of a handshake agreement with the library and the town that in exchange for letting the library staff use our parking space behind the building, they would repave our driveway and replace our cesspool with a septic system and connect the storm drain from our parking lot to the libraries. So, the septic has been upgraded in recent memory.
We have a letter about that filed with the county.
Oh, okay.
What does it say?
Today, no, second, two thousand sixteen, subject Mary Beaman, First Church of Christ Scientist, forty-nine Harrock Street, lot, map forty, lot four, the applicant's proposed special permit use will have minimal impact on the recently upgraded septic system currently existing on the site. It is recommended that this applicant's proposed special permit be approved.
I read his mind, who knew?
I had a question for you.
Yeah.
Who determines which organizations can rent out the spaces?
That's up to our board of directors. We have a three-member board, and every group that wants to use the space, we have an application form, and that goes to the board for their review. They meet, discuss. They also discuss the content of the productions and kind of want it to be family-friendly, that sort of thing. So, it is up to our, our board, which changes every year. There's a new board member, one leaves, one gets added.
So, I guess, I, I had not, until Josh asked that question, you know, we had an issue with our friends at the fairgrounds where they had gotten a lot of stuff going and a lot of music going on, all kinds of, so, this would not be late at night or become a problem. You, you don't really have neighbors there, do you?
Well, we do. The Twines live right next door, and we've got the library on the other side, and one door away, you know, beyond the Twines is Carolyn, what's her last name? Marlo, thank you. And we have talked with Sandy from the library, Marianne and Jeremy Twine, and I have written a letter to Carolyn, I haven't spoken to her in person, and our immediate neighbors are okay with it. They were happy with the way things went this summer with Avita. That was kind of, you know, it turned out to be kind of a testing of the waters. One of the things that, well, actually, there are two things that this particular theater group would like us to do in prep for their future use is to add air conditioning and window shades, so we are in the process of getting bids for that. We got a small bequest last spring, so we're hoping to invest maybe about half of that into air conditioning and window blinds.
Just sort of cut to the acid test. You've never had any complaints from neighbors-
Not yet.
-prior-type productions?
Yeah, most of the comments have been great, you know, like, boy, Guilford's actually alive, you know, this weekend, there's some, something going on.
A place.
Yeah, most of it's been very, very positive. The, the, the negative was that it was so hot in July that it was pretty brutal in there, but the performance was great and nobody left, that I'm aware of.
That's perfect, good.
The summer, they maxed out about two hundred attendees, and they only seated the public on the main floor of the auditorium. The balcony was used for crew and chorus members in the musical. They went up there to sing, but public was only downstairs. Their, their guess is that they would probably max out future ticket sales at one eighty instead of two hundred, because it just felt a little crowded, but there didn't seem to be any difficulty with fitting that many in there.
I was more worried about the parking.
Well, you know, it's right on the green, there's, you know, people come from anywhere.
There are on that green all the time.
Mm-hmm. Well, the, most of their performances are Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings and Sunday matinees. That's the predominant use.
A lot of people are on the greens.
Well, the, like I said, the first weekend of the show this summer was right during expo, and nobody had a problem finding parking. It overlapped expo by about an hour.
Was that this is almost like a commercial usage of what was a religious institution? Is, is that why we're here, or?
It's nonprofit, it's a sort of-
Nonprofit. If it were a for-profit institution, it wouldn't be allowed in the residential zone.
Oh, it's a residential zone.
Right.
Religious institutions-
So, you know, they're favored, they have special status. But this activity is not associated with the religious institution.
Right.
It's rental of the space-
Right.
-to another nonprofit to conduct an artistic endeavor, which is use allowed in residential zones by special permit.
Right. And it's, it's slightly different from, you know, the congregational church does a lot of theater and music performances at their church, but they're pretty much run by their membership. They're, they're not necessarily bringing-
It would be similar if they, some churches run daycare centers, which is, they can do, if they lease out their space to somebody else to run a daycare, and technically, that's a special permit use.
I'm, I'm feeling very uncomfortable about this, because, because I'm thinking of all the other churches, and I'm thinking of our church, and we've had a detached building on the church property, and there's been a daycare center, a preschool in that building for thirty-five, forty years, as long as I can remember. And now, now we're stepping off. It seems to me we're sort of edging towards trying to decide what congregations can do with their facility. I mean, so, so, so if not-
Are you saying that they have a right to do that without our approval?
I, yeah, I think this is really slippery ground. I mean, it's, it's like, okay, so, what if the North Guilford Congregational Church decided that someone come in and, and have an organ recital, and they charge five dollars a ticket to come to the organ recital? That's an event. If, if, never mind them doing the play, what if the church, the kids in the, in the, in the church did a play, and people came to it, but they charged five dollars to try to cover their expenses?
Yeah, I don't think it's the fact that there was a-
There's a charge for it. The distinction is between whether or not it's directly or quite somewhat directly associated and run by the church itself, as opposed to being run by some other entity that's renting the space from the church. That's the difference. If it's the church sponsoring an event, then that's-
So, so, you know-
That's, that's the distinction.
Tom has a valid point, because what little did I know about some of the churches is that they do have all these other programs going on all the time.
Right.
So, do we then now have to go marching into all the churches on the green and say, all right, listen?
Ask for a special permit from all of them?
Well-
For all the churches in the town?
Or, or is one of our options to say here that Mary doesn't need a special permit?
That's your call, I think.
I mean, the downside, the downside to that is she turns it into a commercial playhouse, and we already said that she can do whatever she wants, say, and that she could do that anyway. I mean, she could, potentially, if we say yes to the special permit, she could rent it seven days a week. Not gonna do that. So, I, but your point's well taken. You know, I, I'm aware of several churches on the green that have this very thing going on, and why should we make her go through these hoops if we're not gonna do that with the other ones? It's not fair.
Well, so, I'm, I might as well say this, I'm looking at this application obviously very favorably. I also don't think that, I think that we would be walking into the deep weeds if we were to, to deny it, but I understand that staff has drawn a distinction between the types of things that the congregational church was doing, where they were all running it together, versus, you know, this, you know, this outside group coming in and, and doing this work. That, you know, that distinction can get a little bit fine, but the fact that they're really just doing this out of, out of an overabundance of caution, and I think, I, I doubt that it will set a meaningful precedent for the other churches. But if it, you know, if they show up, then we'll just be stuck saying, yeah, to do that.
Well, the other thing I'm wondering about, let's take this building for a second, the town owns this building. I, I know, for example, that they have about, they have, they rent, they rent that space out on the first floor to do a ballet thing, Christmas pageant every year.
And the school, too.
But when you say word Christmas, we're-
Well, what, whatever the thing is, but they do that, so does the town have to have a special permit for this building to do that?
No, the First Amendment covers it.
So, I don't know-
I don't think it covers-
Tom's got a valid point. I mean, I, we know, I read somewhere where a guy runs a wrestling camp, he wanted to rent the high school, but because it's in a high school, they want to charge him instead of two hundred, they want to charge him two thousand dollars.
Right.
So, this is the very same thing, but is it because it's the town? The town doesn't have to ask, but this poor church- The town doesn't have to ask, but this poor church, we're going to make them jump through these hoops. Is that how this is, or am I misreading this?
Well, but our job as a commission is...
That really bothers me.
If they've jumped through this hoop and they're before us, it's just our job to yes or no it and be done.
Quite frankly, is this a matter of church and state? Is this a matter of church and state?
You're asking us to talk about legal issues that are way above our pay grade?
You know, if you want to... You did come up before with church, and we look within residential areas. If you're going to try to regulate the religious practice of the church...
That we're clearly not doing.
You've got to have a very strong...
No, we're not doing that.
...sainty or something. For ancillary use, that's totally different.
When's the use sort of accessory to the...
Principal use, which is the church, and when is it a whole separate other use that's using the church's building, you know, it's going to benefit the church if they want to keep the lights on?
One of the things that came up in our conversations in our membership was, you know, a lot of churches around the green have rummage sales, for example, and we don't do that kind of thing. We don't have fundraisers, but this is our version of a fundraiser.
Did you have any...
Probably not. And just so you know, we do not allow sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages either. That's part of our agreement with anybody that uses...
So, the other churches use wine?
So, do we have that, do we have any other...
Well, I had a question. Did you have to pay an application fee?
I did, $165.
So, we can do that right now. Why not, Josh, since you brought it up, why don't you move to waive it?
I'll move to the... Second.
Thank you, Josh.
Can we do that now?
Let's just do it.
Do you want to do it, do you want to do it at the end?
I have a question whether we should even keep...
Well, we don't need the hard cost.
All right, all in favor of waiving the fees?
And then we'll revise the agenda later. We'll approve the revised agenda.
Well, this is, this is only a first hearing, she's got to come back.
Yeah, but on the fee.
And you're a teacher.
All right. Anybody in the audience have a question for this applicant or comment, can I?
What about economic development? They probably have a... There you go, that's it. Perfect, it's all we need.
All right, thanks, Mary.
Thanks, and do you want me to come back next week or we're waiting here?
Two weeks. Two weeks. This is continued on the 16th.
Okay.
Move to continue to the 16th.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. Next one is Soundview View Road LLC, Metro Pooch. This is on Soundview Road, map 42, Lot 118, 4, 5, and 6. Zone I-2. Special permit.
For the record, my name is Thomas A. Stevens. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor. I'm here in behalf of the applicant, which is Soundview Road LLC. Sal Lefada is the principal in that LLC. I'm here this evening with Michael Rothstein and Kristen Delaie. I didn't see Kristen, she's right in front. These folks are going to buy the property, they'll be the operators of the property. Warren Friedenfeld and Gerson Gottlieb are here, they're architects from Boston. They're going to talk about the building itself. John Cunningham is here, landscape architect, and I think Anthony Lefada is here also. My partner Chuck Mandell behind me, he will be at the second public hearing because I won't be here, so I just wanted you folks to see each other, and he'll be my cut man if need be. The site is located on the west side of Soundview Road, it's about 2,100 feet south of the Boston Post Road. It's currently three lots in a 1970 subdivision. The three lots are going to be merged into one lot, which will be 11.99 acres. The property is zoned I-2. The property to the north and south of it are also zoned I-2, and the properties across the street to the east, and the properties to the west across East Creek are zoned R-3. On September 21st this year, my birthday this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a zoning code amendment. This is for the pet boarding, and the approval was for this site, and I think there's also three other I-2 sites in town, and it gave us some relief from zoning setbacks. We have a 40-yard, 40-foot front yard setback, we have a zoning setback, I think.
This is where we had the issue with the wetlands, right? 75 feet, 100 feet, there was that...
It was the two zones.
Two zones, yeah.
Yep, and that's, that was related to the center line, is the zone line the center line of Soundview, is it the street line?
From what we're here, 35 feet versus 25 feet.
35 feet versus 25 feet.
I'm sorry, yes, from Critical Coastal Resource, that's correct. That was the most recent.
That was the most recent?
Yes. The pulse creator, we'll call it. So, the, at that point, it became possible for this site to come forward for special permit and a site plan and a coastal site plan for pet boarding for dogs and cats. We couldn't have done that without the amendment to the zoning regulations. So, we're here tonight, as I said, I've got the applications in my hand, the special permit application, therefore the mandatory two public hearings, I believe, a site plan application, and a coastal site plan application. As pertinent to this, we have to go to the design review on the 9th of this month and to inland wetlands for a site plan referral. There's no wetlands, inland wetlands on the property or within 150 feet of where we're doing our proposed activity, but it's a mandatory referral.
It's a mandatory referral just because it's close to the marsh?
I don't know why.
The coast?
Don't know.
Question, why is it mandatory?
Because it's 25 feet from a Critical Coastal Resource. No.
What's a mandatory referral?
We did it in 2009, so we're doing it again.
When you talk about going to wetlands? Yes. The Inland Wetland Commission can regulate navigable rivers from the edge of the river out, and they can look at any proposed development within that area.
I don't think your action is unlike any, unlike subdivision. I don't think you have to wait for their recommendation, but at any rate, we expect that on the 9th, hopefully they'll review it, improve it as it did in 2009. 2009, we had three separate site plans approved on the same property, smaller buildings, but the edge of disturbance is very similar to what we have this evening. What we're proposing to do now is to combine the three lots and put up one large building to be known as Metro Pooch. You've seen this as we went through the amendment process, we saw it a couple of weeks ago before you. The building has a footprint of 10,348 square feet. It is in flood zone AE11. The entire site is in flood zone AE11. We are required by the town requirements to construct the building with one foot of freeboard, which puts the finished floor, which is a slab, at elevation 12. I'm proposing 12.25, just to have a little leeway and be able to sleep comfortably during construction.
That requirement just popped up last month.
Did it, was it that recent?
Yeah.
Actually, we submitted, we submitted September 28th, and it was before that. Maybe Mark Damiani knew it was coming, I don't know. But I know we're required to put it in at 12, and we're going three inches higher than that. There are 80 kennels being proposed and two grooming stations, and what we're doing is we have two separate subsurface sewage disposal systems. One has a capacity of 1,500 gallons a day, the southern one has a capacity of 1,000 gallons a day. It's two separate systems, and that's to handle the bathrooms, the runs, the kennels, the grooming stations. Because the driveway is going to be paved, the reserved septic areas have to be prepared. That small handout is a brutal thing to read, but you can look at the pictures.
The overall square footage of the building, how much?
It's 12,000. I'll have to get it off one of the...
It's both downstairs.
How many kennels and grooming stations?
There's 80, there's 80 runs.
Eight kennels?
Yes, and two grooming stations. The, the detail of the septic system trench on page five. What has to be done is unsuitable soils, organic soils have to be removed, select bill has to be placed to set up for a reserve area should they ever be needed. All we're required to put in is a primary septic, but we have to prepare the reserve, not put in the galleries, just have the soil set up. The site's going to be served by public water and gas. The building, the access to the building is via the driveway, it's going to be one-way driveway, one way in from the north, out from the south. Warren will talk about the details of the activities within the building, outside the building. I just want to talk about supporting utilities. The driveway will be paved, there are 17 parking spaces, two of which are handicapped opposite the building. The stormwater runoff, the roof, the driveway, and the walk are going to add a total of 24,569 square feet of impervious, which is now the site is vacant. So, that increase, there's going to be three separate rain gardens. That will take, it'll be similar to the Stonehouse application, it's the first inch of rain, it's a coastal policy, the by-title wetlands, to take the first inch of rain, retain it. These rain gardens are going to do that. During construction, the rain gardens are going to be made into sediment, temporary sediment traps, which is bottom right-hand corner of page four. It's a stone berm, so when the rain gardens get filled, it'll filter through the stone before it exits and go sheet flow toward the wetlands. The site came before P and Z in 2009, as I mentioned, it was approved as three separate site plans. At that time, public access was proposed, and it's shown on sheet three of five. The public access went to a stand of pine trees right on the edge of East Creek. We're proposing to put a bench there. Because that was a key part of the approval in 2009, we're proposing to leave that exactly as it was approved, so actually this portion of the plan hadn't been touched in seven years. The state, however, has taken personnel, and the familiar people have been shifted westerly to Greenwich, and we have new people. It's Carol Zaminski will be taking on the project. Chuck contacted her yesterday, she's on board with plans that you have before you this evening. She's also aware of the public hearing, that the other shoe's going to come in two weeks. The access, also two cars, parking for two cars for the walkway. Addition, in addition to what was proposed for public convenience, because of the view lane request to Kevin McGee on the Stonehouse project, we're proposing a 40-foot view lane on the north property line and a 20-foot view lane on the southerly property line. In effect, we're not going to be developing that property, cannot develop the property, but it formalizes the view lane and prohibits anything within that area. The best view is going to be at the end of the pedestrian walkway, which shows the best on sheet two of five. There's a formal easement that has to be drawn up for this, and it has to be drawn up, the applicant's got to draw up something that he can live with, the State of Connecticut has to approve it, and the town attorney, I assume, would have to review that same document. But that document will be part and parcel with the view.
Is that for public access?
That's for public access, East Creek.
How many animals kind of, how's there a giving?
I'll sit and I'll make sure your question gets answered.
Thank you.
I don't want to give you the wrong answer soon. I'll make sure you get the good one. Coastal Resources, well, as I said, there's three applications going, so I want to talk about all three. So, I'll talk about Coastal Resources, which is coastal site plan application. The coastal resources are shown best on sheet three of five. There are the high-tide line, which is elevation 3.9, and the tidal wetlands, which are shown here in green. Kevin McGee had a concern across the street that there were inland wetlands within 100 feet of the driveway. We had David Lord, a soil scientist, investigate that. That is also tidal wetlands. If you look at the cover picture, you can see that there's wetlands.
They're both, they're both sides. These tidal, these tidal paths.
Through the soil, so those are tidal.
I don't know if they're the culvert, I don't know what talks between the two, but the elevations over there are like 2.8, 1.8, I mean, it's, it's...
Those were tidal, I'm familiar with them, that's shocking.
They look the same, but I know enough not to guess, so we put a stake in it. Coastal jurisdiction line is shown here, is this heavy, I'm sorry, it's the elevation four line, which is right adjacent to the heavy orange line. We're proposing nothing C-word of the coastal jurisdiction line, and we're staying with the building, we're staying a minimum of 25 feet from the Critical Coastal Resource, which is the high-tide line. Warren Friedenfeld is the architect for the building. I'm going to ask that he come up next and make sure that he tells you how many dogs and cats.
Well, I wonder what the dogs behind there have, is just grooming them or are they breeding them?
No breeding.
No breeding.
No.
Thank you. My name is Warren Friedenfeld from Rowhouse Friedenfeld and Associates in Boston, Massachusetts. We specialize in the design of animal care facilities, in fact, that's all we do. And, yes, we, it's, it's a pleasure for me to be able to get into my car to drive to a community. 90% of the time, I have to go to Logan to go, so this is particularly nice. So, the, this is a boarding facility, and what we try to do is to create a facility that's warm, friendly, and inviting, and one that will become a real joyful member of the community. That was our, our goal in creating this. This is the site. It faces out onto a marsh on Soundview Road. We're entering the site here. This is our main entrance, and then the other boarding facilities, I'll take you through the plan. I don't know how much you want me to focus on what's going on inside the building. I assume most of what you'd like me to do is focus on, on what's outside, but I will do that if you would like. This is a context locus map showing the residential area. This is the marsh land. There's another large building here. I'm sure you're all familiar with this area. The, so, I'm going to take, there, most of everything we're doing is on the first floor. There is a small upper level. As I mentioned, we're entering the site, entering the building here, coming into a waiting area... waiting area, there's a reception desk. From here, you can look up, it's a two-story space. There's cat boarding here with cat play structures. The whole idea is that we wanted this to be a fun, um, friendly, kind of enjoyable experience for people to come to. And, uh, I'll show you some views of the inside, um, as we go further. But, um, as you come in, you can see into, uh, these are each, um, what we call them runs there. These are the boarding facilities. There's indoor, outdoor areas. So these are our deluxe suites, deluxe. These are our luxury suites and these are our standard suites. Kind of like when you get in an airplane, you know, you've got your...
Can you tell me what the differences between them are?
Size. Primarily size.
Just size?
Yeah.
I don't know what luxury means, you know, automatic shower or something.
No, you know, like, when you go first class on a plane, the seats are just bigger.
Correct.
You know?
That's fine.
Um, there are, these are, um, our playrooms, also training and obedience, uh, doggy daycare, things of that nature. And there are outdoor play yards that these go out to. These are your support functions, food prep, bathing, laundry, things of that nature. There's a stair that goes up here and, um, these are cat play structures. There's little cat spiral stairs and ramps and just a fun place for, for cats to be. And also, the, um, upper level is also where the administrative offices are. These are the two-dimensional and three-D views of the building. All, I'm, whatever thing I'm showing you is actually in front of you, um, just larger views of it. Again, these are just three-D axonometric views, um, showing the front entrance to the building. These, these are the, um, fences in the back that go to the play yards. And these are some interior shots. When you walk in, there's a water wall here. Again, it's just certain kind of ambiance that we want to create. If you look up here, you'll look up through windows to the cat playroom where the cats are climbing on ramps and spiral stairs and, uh, things of that nature. This is a view towards that. This is looking down into the waiting area. This is one of the typical, uh, housing suites. It's skylit. And this is the, um, doggy daycare, training and obedience, uh, section at the, at the far end. So that is basically, um, the project inside and out. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes.
Any, any, uh, opportunity for medical care for the animals in this facility?
This is not a veterinary hospital. I'm sure if a dog got a splinter in its paw, they'd be able to do something. There is, there is a, a small little first aid room, but that's about it. Uh, anything that is of any serious nature would, would go to a, a veterinarian.
Has your experience been, um, the use of germicidal cleaners to clean up the runs in the various areas affecting the septic system?
Uh, yes. The, all of the, um, the runs will have what's called a flushing trough drain where you can hose liquids, solids, diarrhea, whatever into that and you hit a button, it all flushes away. And the cleaning system that we used, it's called SMT, which is Spray Master Technologies. I have a booklet I can show you, but although you can go to their internet. It's a, it's a spraying system that both, uh, disinfects and cleans, sending everything into this trough that then flushes away. It's kind of like a linear toilet in the floor.
So, so the use of germicidal cleaners, will that have a negative impact on the septic system in terms of...
No. This is, this is just regular cleaners.
So you have eighty, uh, eighty spots for these dogs?
Yes, there are eighty runs.
Eighty runs. Oh, that's going into the septic system.
Uh, yes. I mean, it's, uh, not much different than human waste.
And it's eighty. It's eighty is quite a few.
Uh, yeah, but it's small dogs and little dogs.
Small dogs. Okay, we already have a small dog there. The next question I have here is, and I understand it is insulated, so the neighbors are not going to have to listen to dogs.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So in terms of, of noise, first, the first thing we do is acoustic absorption, both high frequencies and low frequencies. And we use acoustic absorbing panels within every space so that sound energy is absorbed immediately within the space. Then we, um, provide acoustic, um, separation. So, um, and again, materials for high frequencies and low, like, high frequencies might be howling or, or low frequency might be barking. And so when this is completed, and we specialize in this, you, you can stand and put your ear next to the building, you won't hear anything, let alone at the property line. You won't hear anything. Uh, it's a very sophisticated acoustic, both absorbing and the sound transmission coefficients are excellent.
Very important for the neighborhood.
Yes, absolutely.
Tom, there are a couple of letters that I'd like to read.
Didn't, one of them addresses the septic?
No, you're good.
All right. And this is from Dennis Johnson, uh, the Director of Health dated today. Uh, the proposed pad boarding facility will utilize two septic systems for disposal of all wastewater generated from the site. Each system has been designated according to typical chem, kennel and grooming design flows generated from the, the proposed eighty kennels and two grooming stations. Soil, soil tests conducted on the site revealed suitable soil for installation of a septic system sufficient in size to accommodate the proposed daily waste flow, wastewater flow. Based upon soil test results and the engineer's sanitary design plan, it is recommended that the applicant's special permit application be approved, so I think that that's okay. And then there's another letter from Kevin McGee. This is to Tom. He's an environmental planner.
Actually, a memo from Kevin to Tom Stevens.
Tom Stevens.
It outlines his...
So you, you received this yesterday in the email? Okay. Uh, I have reviewed the plans and have the following concerns that I would like to address. One, check the main file in the office and there is no landscaping plan submitted with the application. Can you provide a copy of the plan? Two, with the intense development close to the tidal marsh, I would like to see a, a separate erosion and sedimentation control plan. The plan should show, A, temporary sedimentation control basins and how the site will be graded to capture the sedimenta, sediment in the basins. B, silt fence should be backed with, uh, with hay bales due to the large amount of fill being utilized to construct the site. C, the site fence should be pushed further away from the coastal jurisdiction line than shown on the plans in order to provide additional layers of erosion control if needed. Several locations on the plan show the silt fence adjacent to or crossing over the coastal jurisdiction line. Uh, D, a tracking pad of at least, uh, fifty feet in length. E, details for E and S measures and the wall. Uh, three, construction sequence should be revised to reflect the site and include the timing for the, the construction of the wall. Correct text, uh, town of Guilford, uh, not Guilford. Four, details should be provided showing the cross-sections of the rain gardens, uh, bottom elevation. Five, how are the roof? Oh, I guess these are questions. Did you, did you answer these questions? Did you respond to him?
I just interrupted.
Yeah.
Tom Stevens?
Yeah.
Yeah, we wrote that last night and got it this morning.
Yeah.
I'd say two-thirds of those have been addressed.
Okay.
So I want Chuck here to, he'll chase that to the ground by next...
Okay.
Two-thirds of those requests are on the plan.
Finish asking them for the record, then we could get to next week. I'm sure there'll be a response email, but I'll read it. Uh, five, where is the rain garden by the road made to overflow to? Six, what is the material proposed for the exterior play walls? Uh, yards, uh, is wash, uh, water from this area designed to be filtered by the rain gardens? In addition, the stormwater maintenance plan that you prepared in two thousand and nine should be updated to reflect the new use of the property. Kevin.
Um, by the way, I might also add... Oh, are you done?
No, I'll say, yeah.
I, I might also add that this is also, uh, designed to be a very environmentally friendly building. We're using recycled materials. Uh, we intend to capture stormwater and recycle it, reuse it for washing the runs and things of that nature. So we're very, very cognizant and very, um, we put a lot of thought into having this be, um, a real environmentally friendly, um, part of the community. Any other questions I can answer?
Yeah, can you, um, do, uh, sell animals?
I'm sorry?
Buy and sell animals?
No.
No?
No buying and selling.
Not at all.
This is, this is like, um, a child daycare center, except these kids have four legs.
Okay, I can picture that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Questions, uh, for the applicant from the audience? Uh, anybody have a permit at this point?
Have you completed your presentation?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, do you have any, uh, questions on the landscape like this?
Yeah.
I apologize. My preliminary plan did not make it into the initial application when I came to town. This is the one light fixture that we've, that we've selected for the property. Once again, John Cunningham, one of TEC Landscape Design, located at sixty-two Wall Street in Madison. Very simple landscape plan, okay? The building, Soundview Road, basins, three basins. Respect that most of the material that's shown on the plant list, okay? We're trying to leave, if you see these dots over here, they're existing trees that we're trying to leave on the site. There's not going to be much site work. Uh, I've also made some notes to remove the invasive material that's along the road that's not even, not really on our land, but if this is the edge of the road, we'd like to remove the invasive material back along there. Light fixture that I just dropped off is a bollard. We're not suggesting any post lights. It's about fifty-four inches tall. It's a full cutoff fixture, okay? I have either five or six of them, if you follow my finger. There's two here at the entrance. There's one here, edge of the bed. There's one here at the end of the parking. And there's one last one on your way out, okay?
Is there any other parking light?
No, just the bollards.
And is there any concern about light leaking off the property that's still contained?
The, if you look at the print that I just gave you and go to page number two of that, the photo metrics are on the back of the page. It's a very small circle. You see this bollard here? The, the, the light itself will be facing the paved portion. Wouldn't be much more than that. It's not supposed to be like an illuminated parking light, okay? Plant materials all native. Respect that red maple for shade trees, service berry or shadlo, which is Amalanki here. They're going to be kind of framing in some of the basins. You look at some of the shrub material, ornamental grass, dwarf bought fajilla around the building, uh, variety of juniper that I use quite a bit of, Sergeant's viridis, a, a dwarf variety of ornamental grass and black-eyed susan. Your wetland material, I won't go through it all. You have cleftra, sweet fern, joe pie weed, switchgrass. It's native wetland stuff, okay? To answer one of the questions, if we need to draw some sections on the basins themselves for Kevin, we can. A section, everyone is just a cutthroat. They weren't happy to do it. Any questions on the landscape?
Nope. That's it.
Now, what about Catherine?
That's it for your present. You got anybody else? That's it?
I'm out of, I'm out of notes. I'm out of presenters, I think.
Go. Someone would like to make a comment? Thank you. Come on up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Catherine Kirin, and I'm from View Lane. Um, I'm here speaking in favor of this application. Currently, right now, Kristen's business is in North Bramford and I know a lot of, uh, other people in town are traveling to North Bramford for this, so we're very excited to possibly have it in, in Guilford. Um, when she first told me about this and it was going on basically a commercial road, but there were residential homes across the street, my first reaction was how would I feel if my mother's house was across the street? Um, because I know dogs barking would, would drive her crazy and she really, uh, alleviated that. And their plan, having the building be completely soundproof, um, made me comfortable having, if it was my mom across the street. Um, and then your question about eighty dogs with waste going in the septic. Um, I work in a building, two buildings down and there's a hundred people using their septic system every day, so I don't think that's really an issue. So...
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir, come on.
Um, Jason Iglesias, three seventy-six Colonial Road. Um, you know, I will allow you all to do your job and figure out all the details of that. I just want to say that if you have any questions about the integrity of this business and the person, the person who is applying for this, it's, I, it's something they've been doing, that they know how to do. I believe that they've covered a lot of bases, um, really shown you that this is something that, you know, they've, they've sort of, they'll, they'll keep answering your questions and figure out the details. Um, once, once again, um, I have a building downtown that has a thousand people a day in it and we have public bathrooms, so if a thousand people all do something in that bathroom, I wouldn't think there's any worry about eighty dogs. So, um, so just wanted to throw that out there as well, so that's all. Thanks.
Anything else?
I'd like to say one thing.
Sure.
Related to the waste. Chuck Mandell, I work with Tom Stevens. Uh, you're concerned about the waste. Well, most of it is picked up and removed, so the bulk of the waste is actually just what the remainder, it's not the entire, uh, product, as you say. You're right. So it is just wash water.
Okay. Question, is this, is this going to be designed to you? Does it have... Okay. All right. Anybody else? Uh, we have, we're going to have a second meeting on this. Someone...
Move to continue to November sixteenth.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Is that the right date for the applicant as well?
Yep.
It's November sixteenth.
I said November sixteenth.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Do the staff...
Yes, I have. We have a copy there.
Okay. Okay. Unless some, unless some questions... Yeah. Okay, uh... Yes, George, you're seated on this one because Ray, Ray recused himself. You were seated now. Okay. Uh, the next is a petition from the Economic Development Commission to amend two seventy-three dash forty-seven site maintenance outside display of merchandise. This is the first of two hearings and the second one will be on eleven sixteen. And you're presenting, sir? Please identify yourself.
I am. My name is Mark Wasserman. I live at one sixty-seven Glenwood Drive and I am the chairman of the EDC here in Guilford. Uh, also, the Cubs are up three to one in the top of the fourth. Just in case anybody needs to know that. I'm just, I'm just reporting with facts. That's what I'm here to do.
Okay.
All right. Um, this is the fourth time that we have presented this to, uh, this commission over the past four years, uh, three years, apologize. So is there any questions on what this is about? Is, I, I think we're all familiar with two seventy-three forty-seven by now? Yes?
Before we start, two, actually, you did you... Alan is, he is, you are? I am. You are? You are and you are. It's seven, right? One, two, three, four, five, six... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, so Josh Hirschman, Rich Meyer, Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Thomas Cost, Walter Corbier.
Yes. George?
George Underhill and Alan Brown.
Right.
Okay.
Do you want me to get a chair? I can sit too.
Yeah, right.
Get that a qualm. Go for it.
So, just to recap briefly, has everybody seen the letter that I sent to Tom? Everybody aware of? Okay. I think you have, you have this letter in your file.
I think.
Do you want me to read it in for you?
September twenty-ninth, and then you have the drafts, August seventeenth of the actual proposed text.
I will read Mark's letter.
Yeah.
Sure. So, this is dated September twenty-ninth. Dear Chairman Cost, earlier this year, the Economic Development Commission proposed an amendment to zoning code, chapter two seventy-three, Town in Guilford, section two seventy-three dash forty-seven. On behalf of local businesses in town, the purpose of the amendment is to permit outside displays in order to stimulate local business and provide visitors with a vibrant and welcoming shopping experience throughout our town. Unfortunately, the proposed amendment did not pass at that time. The amendment was passed on the zoning, was passed onto the zoning committee, who majorly reworded the, majorly reworded the attached version in order to address concerns that were brought up by some of the P N Z commissioners. E D C suggested some additional wording to be added. The attached provision is a culmination of our combined efforts. We believe that the version addresses all the concerns that were brought up in the previous attempts to have this amendment approved by the P N Z commission. Therefore, the E D C is proposing the attached revised amendment, which will provide more flexibility and greater visibility for businesses and easier enforcement. George Quarle and Reggie Reed have again provided their outstanding guidance to the zoning committee and E D C in crafting the language in this, in this amendment. The E D C not only believes that making commerce thrive is in keeping with the Guilford Plan of Conservation and Development, but makes Guilford a welcoming place to visit. By allowing the use of outdoor displays, we are showing visitors to our great town that we are open for business. We are requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve this amendment to section two seventy-three dash forty-seven for our businesses and our community. In addition, I have spoken with Art Benson of the Ethics Commissioners regarding the eligibility of commissioners who may work at, who may work or at businesses in town to vote on this amendment, and he informed me that the decision to recuse a, or vote on an issue before the Planning and Zoning Commission is solely up to the commissioner and is not in conflict with the Code of Ethics. However, if any commissioner tries to influence another commissioner in any way as to how to vote or eligibility to vote is a violation of the Code, the Code of Ethics, it can be taken to the Ethics Commissioner for appropriate action. If you or any of the commissioners have any questions about this, please reach out to Art Benson directly at two oh three six three one. I am providing this information solely for the purpose of clarification. The decision to participate in any future hearings on this matter is entirely up to the commissioners. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and look forward to having a suitable resolution for all those concerns in the coming weeks. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Thank you sincerely, Mark Wasserman, Chairman, Guilford Economic Development Commission.
So, Art Benson gave you, um, an opinion?
Yes, he did.
And did, can we get a copy of that?
He did not give it to me in writing. This was a verbal conversation that we had on the phone. He acknowledges the conversation, and that's why his email address and phone number are in the letter. Please feel free to reach out him, to him directly for any clarification or questions regarding that.
And Art Benson is?
He is the chairman of the Ethics Committee for the Town of Guilford.
He's the chair of the Ethics Committee?
That's correct.
And did you review this with the state?
I sent it to the state. I did not get a response.
Understood.
Mark, do you want to just go over some of the changes?
Of course. Absolutely. Everybody has a copy in front of them? Under the direction of George, he had broken the amendment up into two separate parts as before, or as it is currently written. It is one unified amendment. So, two seventy-three dash forty-seven A, site maintenance, there was no changes made to the wording of that. It was just separated out. Reads, "No commercial truck, trailer, van, or van body or temporary shelter, storage, container, or building shall be located on any lot for the purpose of an office, or storage, or processing of construction materials in connection with a construction project on the lot, except as approved by the zoning enforcement officer, the commission, for a limited period of time." And then we break out the temporary display of merchandise under two seventy-three forty-seven B. The two, they're, they're so radically different from each other that separating them into two separate amendments made sense, and George had done the wording on that. In a zoning meeting that, and I apologize, I don't have the date. Josh, do you remember the date of that zoning meeting?
August.
Yeah, it was in August. Um, I, do we need to stop for? We'll, we'll go over what the amendment is, and we can break and, and come back after that. So, at that meeting, George, Reggie, Josh, Frank DeAndrea, George Underhill, Rich Wallace, were all in attendance at that meeting, and we discussed what the amendment was, what it was gonna look like, how we were gonna take shape. George had done a draft, George Quarle had done a draft on that amendment, and we had worked from that draft. Josh took further action on it after that meeting to kind of model it after other towns in Connecticut that have, that are of similar stature, statue as Guilford is, and looked at that. Josh had primarily modeled this around the town of Westport, which had a open but limited view of what an outdoor display should be. That being said, I'll read through it quickly.
We're gonna stop right now.
Oh, okay.
This is Martin after this.
We'll, we'll wait for him. If you'd like, I could dance a jig. We're waiting.
Do you want to wait for Lisa?
Yeah, we gotta wait. We'll do something.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're waiting for Lisa. Where is she?
Oh, in the bathroom.
So, this is kind of all the stuff that Westport has?
Can't ask any questions.
No questions.
No questions?
Don't ask any questions. I had like the third, I have the right of amendment that I can talk on what.
They're all just ours.
Fifty years in Westport. Those are all, various boards and commissions and stuff like that.
How's it going, Doug?
Oh, it is? Great.
Welcome, all of it.
My father-in-law's climbing the walls right now.
I can't remember.
He's from Ohio.
Oh.
Well, the Cavs won. See, he, he wants to sweep this year, but the Cavs won. Now he wants the Indians to win, and then he thinks the Browns are gonna win. Do we have to wait for Reggie, Tom?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we're all set to go? We're on. Okay.
We're on. Okay. So, I'll just quickly read through two seventy-three forty-seven B, which is temporary display of merchandise, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. Limited outside display of merchandise shall be permitted in all commercial zones when formally approved by the zoning enforcement officer, provided that the following standards are met. The display is for retail products. I'm sorry, one, the display is for retail products. Two, the display does not obstruct safe pedestrian use of the sidewalks and pedestrian areas, and is not located in parking areas. Three, the display cannot be on a grass strip of median that does not abut the storefront. Merchandise, four, merchandise displayed must be purchased inside the store. Five, only products customarily sold at the store may be displayed. Six, displayed merchandise must be removed to the interior storage at the close of store operating hours each day. Seven, the display must be consistent with the natural aesthetics of the zone. Eight, displays must be maintained in a clear and attractive manner. Nine, clothing cannot be displayed on racks. Ten, displays may not contain any items which may be deemed unsafe, harmful, inflammatory, or offensive. Eleven, displays must be stable and secure as to not fall or blow over as a result of being bumped into, wind, or weather. Twelve, displays may not emit fire, light, smoke, vapors, odors, fumes, sound, or any substance which may pose a health risk. Thirteen, appeals from decisions by the zoning enforcement officer may be taken to the commission. Fourteen, the merchant or property owner shall indemnify the town for any claim caused by the display. Fifteen, the section, this section does not apply to the annual sidewalk sale and previously approved site plans. Sixteen, violations will be subject to enforcement action and may include a citation fine as provided by the Guilford Town Code, Article Two, subsection one dash twelve, and pursuant to section eight dash twelve A of the Connecticut General Statute to Revision nineteen fifty-eight as amended. Okay. Questions?
How are you gonna indemnify the town? Putting a bond up, or are you relying on the financial resources of the merchant to reimburse the town for any lawsuits? What's the method of indemnification?
I'm not a lawyer, and a lawyer wrote that.
I included that in there because it just adds a layer of protection.
So, what resource would you?
The only thing you would be able to do is you would go after the business, if the business existed, and then you could probably go after the property owner, if the property owner had equity in the property, depending on the situation.
How does this?
In fact, you know, probably, this is something that probably doesn't even need to be said because, of course, the town could always go after a business owner for creating a harmful situation, and someone sued the town on the business, on the property.
Someone would sue everybody that could.
Of course. But I'm just saying that in addition to, it just puts, it puts the, the store owner sort of on notice that this is something that the town can and would do if, if a situation arose.
What other significant differences are there between this and the Westport code?
Westport is actually a little bit, I believe, it's a little bit cleaner and narrower. The, really, the, the significant difference is in the Westport code, there's a sec, there's, first of all, it's just one paragraph. Basically says that outdoor displays are allowed, and, except, they cannot be seen from any residential zone. So, that's the only major difference, because here, I think, it's a whole town center area residential, except for the non-conforming uses. Is that correct?
Are you talking about our downtown?
Yeah, our downtown.
The green residential.
Exactly.
So, so, so then, yeah, so exactly. So, that language, if you included that language, the green would be out, and other, other commercial areas would be out in the TS two area. So, I thought that, I thought, and in the conversation that we had in our initial zoning committee meeting where there were other members present, we thought that it would be a good idea to not include that language. But otherwise, it substantially mirrors Westport, Madison, um, language. And, and in fact, I would even say that it probably is a little bit more restrictive than, you know, Westport's obviously more restrictive in the sense that they have that language about not being seen by any residential zones, but I'm not as familiar with Westport and their town center, and they might not have many commercial zones that are in residential areas. So, for them, it might not have really played a role at all. Go ahead, Walter.
This blocks the bubble machine that Purple Bear has.
Leaves the bubble machine up to Reggie, to be honest with you, because if you look at it, it says, "May not emit fire, light, smoke," unless you consider vapor.
As long as the bubbles are non-toxic.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of what I, that's sort of, but Reggie could probably say, you know, it, it isn't allowed, but I, I think that this contemplated that, and it sort of, my reading of this would, would allow it.
No, it's not, it's not the, the emissions that, it's the merchandise displayed must be purchased inside the store. He doesn't actually sell that bubble.
He's not displaying the bubble machine. He's displaying the bubbles that he sells, which he does sell inside the store. The bubble machine is in an enclosure.
The bubble machine is outside the store and visible.
It's in an enclosure.
I, my, my impression of it was, in terms of the bubble machine, is that. Contemplated when writing this regulation, I think as the group that was with me determined that this regulation would allow for the bubble machine. With that said, I believe that Reggie would certainly be able to use number seven, number twelve, as a reason that she would want to not allow the bubble machine. So, it, it really would put the onus on the zoning enforcement officer, and then they would be able to.
You're putting a lot on with this though.
We're putting an awful lot, yeah.
At least six of these are really generic or general.
Very discreet. Yeah, I agree with you.
Super subjective.
Walter, I'll tell you what. I'll talk to Mark Klein, I guarantee he'll buy a bubble machine and put it up for sale in his shop. That'll solve the problem.
Who?
Mark Klein.
Oh, Mark Klein.
Okay?
But.
He'll put a bubble machine for sale.
Sure will. Guarantee you will. Not a problem.
So, then, that, that will solve the problem for anything that anyone sells, right?
Right. I mean.
Just have to buy one thing, and then they can put it out on the walk.
So, we could.
Things that are customarily sold in the store, okay? So, Mark Klein sells toys.
So, if we do it once, it's customarily sold.
A bubble machine could be considered a toy.
Now, you know, obviously, we've had the benefit of having members of the bar on this committee. Has anyone looked into the, whether or not there have been injuries on lawsuits under similar ordinances in other towns, or have we not looked into whether or not anyone got hurt because of this?
Would it be something that I would really advise the town on? Did we, did we look into when we were forming this, this, this document? We haven't yet. I would say that we typically don't look into the legal ramifications of zoning regulations.
You're calling for an indemnification, which means that you must consider the legal ramifications in your work, and I'm asking you whether or not anyone looked into this. It's a symbol, yes or no?
I'm, I'm giving you my answer. I'm saying that we didn't, and I'm also saying that we never do.
Do you think it might be prudent, given that we're going to have all kinds of paraphernalia out on the walks?
It's similar to somebody building a house, and you having to investigate whether anybody has ever fallen on a patio before?
Well, you know, you would, and that's true, but this is going on town on sidewalks, so we're bringing the town into liability issues here.
Have you ever approved the town to build a sidewalk?
I think that's the same, where we're having.
Why, why, how would it be different?
Well, okay, so here we have a situation with this gentleman, and I'm really not familiar with the bubble machine, although I have seen the bubbles falling on the walkway, and it's soaked, and it's potentially slippery. And it's a town sidewalk, so he's adding a layer of danger.
Is it a town sidewalk or a state sidewalk? George? Okay?
So, it's a state sidewalk, so we can let the state get sued.
Sure.
Do we have any, because this town allowed this use, does the town have the pockets get sued because of, we said yes?
Not to my knowledge, if he's indemnifying the town in the amendment, they would have to look at the state property owner in the store room. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't answer that a hundred percent. You just gave me an answer.
If the commissioner wants to, we could have our town council review this and see if she has. she has any issues with it.
Pam instead of Chuck?
Well, we always refer to Pam, and she makes the first decision. Since this has to do, your question has to do with town liability issues, she'd probably be the one that would review it, not Chuck, uh, but that would be her call. We always refer to her first, and then she parses it out to Chuck if she thinks it's something that he should look at.
So is, is anything on this document forbidding the, um, merchant from selling light game? Let's say, um, there's a coffee store, let's, oh, the gentleman was here from the marketplace. So let's say he, he sells coffee in his store. So he can put a coffee maker out on the sidewalk and sell coffee on the sidewalk as long as they pay for it inside, or he can dispense it outside, or what, how does this document speak to that?
That would be a word of health question, because you're talking about food.
That would have to go to, that, that's not considered a display. Food has never been considered a display item, it's considered food, and that would have to go to the health department.
So the evidence of all the commission's position on this is that food is not included in this, is that correct?
We're not saying that, we're saying that open food, served food, okay? That's not included in this, and that goes, in our opinion, without saying, okay? But if somebody is selling a packaged good, like a bag of coffee, that would constitute a display. It is customarily sold in the store, and it would be perfectly fine to have that as a display item.
So, but that the sale would have to be consummated in the store?
That is correct. We are saying that, except during sidewalk sales days.
Mark, just back there, customarily sold inside the store.
What that's targeted at is-
What you mentioned before was that, um, if someone were to just take one item and sell it inside the store, then it would be all right to display it outside.
No, that is not what we are saying.
Well, we talked about just a minute ago, when we were talking about it before, was that the bubble machine, right, is not customarily-
Yeah, bubble machines are in a toy store.
In a toy store, right? Is not, is, he doesn't actually-
Bubble machines are toys.
He doesn't actually-
They make toy bubble machines.
He doesn't actually sell those inside the store, but-
I'm not necessarily sure of that.
Your solution that you, your solution that you mentioned just a minute ago-
Yeah.
With that example, just as a hypothetical-
Sure.
Is that if he sold one, then it would be okay?
No, what I'm saying is, is that a bubble machine, and I, and I don't want to harp on bubble machines all night, but-
Right, but any object, that any, any item that someone wants to put out front, if they go into the store and sell one, then that's okay?
No. What we are saying is, customarily sold in the store. So you are a toy store, okay? There are toy bubble machines.
Yes.
He can sell those in his store. It is customarily sold in a toy store. The bubble machine is allowed.
And just in any, in any toy store.
But let's, let's, let's take the opposite stance of that, okay? So you have the gas stations on the corner of Goose Lane and, um, um, Route one, sorry.
And they want to sell-
And they want to sell, no, 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 no. They want to sell flowers on Mother's Day, okay? Because it's easy to bring in, they can bring it in, they can sell flowers. They don't otherwise sell flowers, so it is not customarily sold at a gas station. So therefore, that display would not be allowed.
So Mark, that, that- Station situation, I know Reggie had a, a problem where there was stacking firewood for sale out in front, and it became a display area.
Correct.
What, how does this speak to that?
If the site plan currently had approved for that, then it would be allowed. That's Reggie's job.
But it's not.
Is it, is it customarily sold at the gas station? If it's not, then it's not allowed. But if they sell firewood inside all year long, then I would imagine that it would become, as part of a convenience store aspect, it would be a cus, an item that is customarily sold there.
How many times during the year, like, I, I, is this every day from now on, or is it just on weekends, or is it once a month, or how is-
Every day.
Every day?
There's no, we could not find any other regulation in the state that limits the amount of days that an outdoor display is allowed.
It's only in Guilford.
Only in Guilford, that's correct.
So, so potentially, every gas station could have firewood out in front now, with this new law, whereas in the past, you couldn't just stack firewood out, um, in front of your store. Is that true?
No. Under the regulation that Reggie, as the zoning enforcement officer, has the power to go to that business and say, "No, you can't do that. It's either A, not customarily sold here, B, it's not in, um, what is it, displayed must, no, I'm sorry, I lost it. It is on here, um, I can't find it. Ah, seven. The display must be consistent with the natural aesthetics of the zone." Okay? That's all on Reggie. Reggie can go to that store and, and say, "The display doesn't work, um, so it's not customarily sold here."
That's the enforcement officer.
That's correct.
So in the matter of-
You want to look at it that way? Sure.
In the matter of Monroe Muffler, where they decided that, um, on one weekend, they were gonna put a pyramid of tires out on the front of their parking lot. They sell tires all the time.
Right.
So this would be okay to put a pyramid of tires out in front of the parking lot?
Is it safe? Is it gonna fall over as a result of wind, weather, as long as it's not on the grass median between the store?
Like six parking spaces for customers' use, but they took three of them and put tires in them. So, yeah, you know, they obviously took away from the parking available, but it looked like Bridgeport, with tires stacked up out front.
But that's what he sells, Rich. That's what his business is.
So my question is, does this document change now that someone-
Yes, it is not located in parking areas.
So it's not located in parking?
Can't be located in parking areas.
Good, good. That's a good answer.
I don't want to bury this off at eleven o'clock.
Either way.
The only display, only-
Is your appeals process-
How may we sell at the store may be displayed, but what's to stop somebody from deciding that they want to sell wood?
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
If somebody wanted to, all of a sudden, at the gas station, wanted to put in sewing, um, wood, and he has it in his store, and he didn't have it before, why can't he put it back up? Because he's got it in the store now, is that, what is that for? You're losing me with this number five here.
Okay, so let's, a gas station convenience store is just that, it's a convenience store, they sell convenience items.
Yeah.
Okay? So these little bags of firewood-
Yeah.
-that they're selling is a convenience item. To me, that is something that is customarily sold at this convenience store. So therefore, it would be allowed. Does that, does that answer your question?
But he hasn't carried it in the past, and now he's gonna carry it.
Sure.
Now, so all of a sudden, he decides, we don't have it in the store for the last fifteen years, but we see a big run on wood, so now we're gonna start carrying wood. So that means you can get it in the store and put it out in front. Would that be correct?
Yes, it's a convenience item, it is a convenience store. What he could not sell is bulk firewood. But these individual packaged pieces of firewood, or bundles of firewood, is a convenience-
I follow that with the wood.
Yeah, that's a convenience item.
You can't sell bulk firewood?
I'm sorry?
He can't sell bulk firewood?
No, that's not something that would be customarily sold at a convenience store.
So there are garden centers, or no, vegetable stores in town that have big piles of bulk firewood out front? That's not normally sold in a garden vegetable store.
Do, is it part of their site plan?
I doubt it. So, or, so then-
Then that's not for-
So then he can't have that there anymore. And, and you know exactly where I'm talking about. He puts it in the parking lot, that big pile of wood.
Off series of parking lot, definitely.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
About garden store.
Yeah. He can't have that then.
You know, we have, I think, eight gas stations, and four of the eight gas stations have site plan approval for outdoor display areas, just to talk to that question.
Like Big Y, they have a thirty-foot site thing, but it's always sixty feet, you know, they always, oh, it just got out of control.
I think they have fifty feet.
Fifty feet?
Yeah. Fifty or?
They got extended, they got extended. I know Walmart got theirs, big, even bigger for the spring.
They got, they got two.
Yeah. Hmm.
I'm gonna say something. Go ahead. I, because of this, from the way I understand it, and having been on that commission for a number of years, basically, we are trying to stimulate business for the downtown area. This is, and for years, we've been complaining that we've driven the merchants out of business on the Green. Well, that's not necessarily we have, some of it's due to business practices, but history goes back, when we first approved the rock pile, back before it was, the plug was pulled on it. I had a number of merchants come to me on the Economic Development Commission meetings wanting to level the playing field. This isn't going to level the playing field, but it's going to give them a little bit of a foot. Retailing, being in retail, is about marketing, and creating, and breeding excitement. Um, case of the bubble machine, that's just one area thing. What this says is that somebody can't bring in a tractor trailer and say, "Truckload sale," which some people have tried to do in the past. We're not gonna sell tied by the truckload, we're not gonna sell motor oil by the truckload. We're just trying to make our boutique retailers some sort of an extra way of performing.
So, yeah.
And, but, let me finish this also. When I first came to town, the only thing we wanted to put in here was boutique retail. Why not give them some support?
So now, the, the, the thing that I've got here is that, right now, we have not leveled the playing field. Right now, we've really skewed the playing field in a number of ways. For instance, we've created a light-up sign on a tower that actually can be seen from the highway, and it's not for our boutique retail. We've created various other incentives, for instance, for Walmart. Right now, Walmart gets to bring in shipping containers to deal with its, um, with its space limitations, right? Because they, they perpet, they come back to us each year, each two years, to get a set of shipping containers actually approved for their parking lot, in order to handle excess space. We haven't done any of those things for our small businesses. And what we've done by actually giving those kinds of things to the very large businesses that have shown up, is we've skewed, we've skewed away from small business and from boutique business. And a lot of that small business and boutique business, I think, at least in the past, the Economic Development Commission sort of recognized that those businesses provide more to our community. Now, we're looking at this, this thing that frankly, nobody has shown us the, the actual, no one can monetize the kind of value that this will have for those small businesses. How do we actually level the playing field? What additional steps can we take to genuinely provide relief for these small businesses now that we have placed these looming large businesses immediately over the top of them? We, this commission, have done that. What kinds of steps can we take that will genuinely help them? Because this frankly, not only feels vague, but it feels like a placeholder. It doesn't feel like something that actually is going to do a whole lot for them, compared to what we've done, compared to what we've done to them in the past three or four years that I've been on here.
I think you made a lot of points, but can we, this is sort of, we're debating the merits, which is good for us to do, you know, at the conclusion of the second public hearing. I, maybe there's a lot of people that want to comment on this here tonight, maybe there's not. But what I'm saying, so, but I know that there are a lot of answers. Yeah, we have, we have. It's all the same, so.
Can I just say one, two-minute thing?
Say another word, I promise.
Walmart, they said that Walmart, um, basically brings in these trailers.
Yes.
This gentleman over here was saying, "You can't do that, you're gonna have a truckload sale." That's entirely different to what Walmart is doing.
That's correct.
Walmart does not bring in those trailers and have a truckload sale. They asked for a variance so that they could bring in, on the holidays, to bring in these tractor trailers and put them in the back, supposedly, it's supposed to be in the back. Put them in the back, empty them, and they're supposed to be out of there in January after the holiday is over.
That sort of happens.
But that's not a, that's not a, we're clearing out trailer trucks. You want a case of yours with the trailer trucks? You said it's not allowed? You remember when we had the storm in Sandy?
Oh, I don't know about the trailer trucks.
Okay?
Yeah.
On the corner of Route one, and, uh, right on, right on the corner where the gas station is, there was trailer trucks there for two weeks, selling, selling, um, generators for seventeen hundred dollars, which is a ripoff to, to the people. And nobody picked that up.
Hey, Tom?
That's what you call a truckload sale.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay. Go ahead, just- One, two-minute thing, and, and I'm being sincere right now. You know, sometimes when we take actions like this, it, it's, it has the counter effect, and it's counterintuitive, and we want our local businesses to succeed. However, by diluting our brand, the Guilford brand, and creating less panache, by making it less special to be here, by having all this debris out on the sidewalk, we're, we're taking away from the thing that draws people to go to these small businesses. You know, people say, when I tell people I'm from Guilford, they say, "Oh, it's such a beautiful town, so quaint, so colonial, so, everything's perfect about it." But as, as we begin to erode that brand, and we start to have, I don't even know what, on the sidewalks, piles of tires and firewood and, and all kinds of things, then our brand isn't gonna draw people to this town anymore. You, you are aware that I have been against this kind of thing for a long time, and it's not because I don't want our businesses to succeed. I don't want to dilute Guilford into something more along the lines of Bridgeport or Norwalk or any of these other towns. This is a small, quaint, little New England town, and every time we take a step in this direction, you may think that you're growing these local businesses, but over the course of years, more and more people are gonna be turned off to Guilford, because they're gonna see things that are not gonna be what draws people here. We're going to destroy our brand. That's my concern. You can have your bubble machines, I don't care about that, and you can put pizzas and tires and all over the place. I'm not gonna be here in another five years, so I'm done. But there are people coming behind me that want to move into Guilford, that want to bring their kids up here, they want to have a family here, they want this town to succeed, and I want it to succeed too. But by changing the character of the town into something that people no longer think is so special, they're not gonna come from all over the state, all over the tri-state area, to come and see Guilford, when Guilford is nothing more than a rummage sale. So that's my concern, that's my genuine, from the bottom of my heart, concern.
Okay. Well, what do you address that for? In nineteen fifty-eight, when these regulations went into effect, okay? Didn't we change the character of the town then?
I don't know, I wasn't careful.
I understand that, but using your theory of changing the character of the town, back then, when these regulations were put in place, and all those merchants who were coming in after those regulations were put in place, they were told they couldn't do, wait, let me finish. That was done by merchants hundreds of years before them.
Well, you're right, and you're right and you're wrong, because in the advent of the interstate running through a town, it brought, it changed the character of our town. We like to say it's an agricultural community. It's, it's really not an agricultural community, it's a bedroom community for people that commute to other areas. And so, you're right, you know, when the regulations came into effect, we did sort of tamp down the maple shade creamery, and we tamped down all these other little agricultural outlets. We did. But, you know, what, what snapshot moment do you want to preserve? Do you want to preserve how it was in the nineteen fifties, do you want it in nineteen sixties, nineteen twenties? Pick one. But the truth is, right now, right now, our town is struggling, and the, the, the main draw that we have is our quaint colonialism. That's what our brand is, that's why people love Guilford. They don't want to come into a town and say, "Oh, look at all those, those lovely mannequins with all their," or whatever it is that you have in mind, and I really don't know what you have in mind. My main concern is not the immediate, "What are we gonna do to benefit these merchants in the next year?" But what are we gonna do over the next twenty years to make this town where people still want to come? And something like this, and, and you'll get your way, I mean, you know, you stack the, you had whoever draw up this document, that's great, that's wonderful, and you can do that. But while we're here and we're talking in front of everybody, you're diluting the brand to the point of where this town is not gonna be something that's sustainable, because you've taken away everything that people want to come to. Just my personal point of view.
And that's, and that's great, Rich, and, and I don't want to downplay that at all, okay? The reason why you're serving on this commission is because of your personal views. That's one of the reasons why all of you are on here, is to show those personal views. And I'm not looking to dis, um, what am I looking for? Disallow, no, that's not it, um, disrespect, uh, or disregard any of those opinions. That's not what I'm looking to do.[1776.94] do. What I'm looking to do is to bring our businesses back to greatness. Most of them, have you talked to the owners down on the green? Have you talked to those owners and hear their stories of how they're barely putting food on their table? They're barely able to keep their employees. Some of them have let their employees go.
As a businessman.
I appreciate what you said, Rich, but I got to agree. This town is small, and half the people in those little stores that are paying a big rent, they need the help they can get. And I don't think it's going to look like a rummage sale if somebody puts out a dress on a hanger out in front of a store, and somebody goes by and they see it, some woman, and they go in the store and look at other stuff. Now, if you bring out a whole rack, I agree with you. But if you bring out just a product to show, like to what they want to do. In fact, when I was at zoning board of appeals, we gave a store right on, right across from the green the right to put something out during the day and show it. Nobody complained. They live all around it.
Mr. Chairman, we have, it seems to me like you're getting into debating the merits of this proposal, and you still have another public hearing on, on the next, next week, or two weeks from now. And we have another public hearing yet tonight, so, with all due, with all due respect.
I will wrap up tonight. I have one, um, item to go, um, and it's short. Uh, I will, this is a letter from Ian Perry, the chairman of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission dated October twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. At the September board meeting of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, the group unanimously voted to disport the display initiative advanced by the Guilford Economic Development Commission. It was the unanimous opinion of the board that allowing Guilford businesses to enhance their marketing opportunities was a positive endeavor that helps to create an environment that promotes and enhances the chance for a business's success. The board believes that the safeguards built into the regulation will ensure that this activity will not diminish the special nature and character of the town. It is our hope that you support this initiative. Sincerely, Ian Perry, Chairman, Shoreline Chamber of Commerce.
When did they put Ian? When did Ian Perry become the president of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce?
Um, he's, uh...
He's the chairman.
He's the chairman. He's not the president. It lasts, this is the chamber president. He apologizes he couldn't be here. At this meeting, he will be at the second, uh, public meeting.
As will the merchants and everybody else who wants to be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you.
They're trying to get us to move along because there is a...
I am. I have one very last thing, just to wrap up with. Rich, we have to trust the merchants in this town. They live in this community. They're not going to put out a bunch of junk. They're going to make it look good. Okay, that's it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I will see you all in two weeks.
We have a second...
Public hearing on this, and I apologize for letting this go so long because we do have one. I forgot that. On the sixteenth. But is there anybody here that would like to ask any questions of the applicant tonight, or make any kind of a comment tonight? You can also do this on the sixteenth, so. Okay, would someone move to continue?
I'm moved to continue to November sixteenth.
Okay. Someone second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Apologize for letting this go on so long. Okay, let's do, the show cause hearing has been continued.
Kevin Murphy.
Oh, Kevin, Kevin Murphy, Pools by Murphy.
Hello. I'm Kevin Murphy, owner of Pools by Murphy, and I'm proposing a spa attached to an existing pool at three-twenty Vineyard Point Road. It's about a thirty, thirty-five-year-old pool that I'm restoring. And, uh, they want to put a hot tub attached to it, raised up about eighteen inches, spilling back into the pool. There's an existing patio there, so I'm not disrupting anything that already wasn't disrupted thirty-something years ago. I have one, one, uh, pic here, but I don't have ten of them, so it's shared. This spa's going to go right with the roof, launch here.
Is that, that just right? I got to be heated?
Yes. It's going to be a shared system with the pool. The same pump, filter, heater for the pool is going to operate the spa also. Also, we're, we're, his equipment now, the pump and filter and all that, is downhill here, out in the woods.
Right.
We're pulling it away from the wetlands towards the house. We're going to reset the equipment up here by the house. So, be even less impact to anything out there if they were ever...
Is this, is this well water? Do you happen to know?
They have a well.
This is where I come from?
Is there, there's new regulations about, uh, this, um, no, well, the spursing, uh...
Do you have to use this recycling system or something on the...
Filter, uh, element and stuff, and the backwash?
Right, this, this, uh, the filter will be a cartridge filter, so no backwashing involved. There are cylindrical cartridges in the tank that you pull out, hose them off, put them back in. So, no backwashing.
How many, how many gallons?
About seven hundred or so.
Looks good.
Do I have any questions?
Got a letter?
This is, uh, from Kevin McGee, they did yesterday, November first. Regarding coastal area management review, Murphy, three-twenty Vineyard Point Road. The applicant is installing... The applicant is proposing install a ten-by-twelve-foot in-ground granite spa attached to an existing pool twenty feet away from a tidal wetland. The site does not provide for erosion control and sedimentation, sedimentation control measures. The work being conducted could impact the adjacent coastal resources if, if erosion and sedimentation control measures are not installed and properly maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected during the construction process, I recommend the following as conditions of approval. Hay bales be installed along the edge of the existing pool fence. Soil spills should be disposed of off-site or a location greater than a hundred feet from the onsite wetlands. Two, the zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer.
There's another letter here by John Gouture, from John Gouture, uh, to Kevin McGee. Kevin, we have reviewed the above- referenced proposal for consistency with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies, and have no comments for the planning and zoning commission's consideration. Please let me know if you have any questions or if you need any additional information. John Gouture.
Yep. So, are you, are you okay with those?
Yeah.
Reggie, do you think that we need some kind of a drawing with some setbacks or anything?
We have it. We have it. We have it.
Okay. It doesn't become a hazard, is it?
No, no. It'll be drained just a bit to keep the water off the tile line from freezing.
Is that right?
But not a lot of water will be discharged.
Is it covered?
It'll be covered.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, someone, uh...
Let's close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry for the, you're all set, sir. We can, we're, we could take action on this tonight.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, moving along with someone?
Make a motion that we approve the revised agenda.
Second.
Okay, so, that means the first thing up, that we can take some sort of action on tonight, is the Ocean Co...
Will Thompson.
Will Thompson. Do we have...
Voted, this is Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, approve a special permit revision and coastal area management site plan revision for Will Thompson and Ocean Co. at, uh, five-three-zero Old Whitfield Street map, twenty-nine lots, eighty-one, eighty-two, and a hundred, as shown on coastal site plan and grading, uh, plan, marine studies research dated eight-twenty-two sixteen, revise ten-seventeen sixteen, prepared by Thomas A. Stevens, and landscape plans prepared by TEC Landscaping Design dated ten-twenty-two sixteen. This application is approved with the following conditions, that the town of Guilford zoning, or, well, the, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer be notified to inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or a suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Additional silt fencing should be installed adjacent to the septic system upgrade. And I believe there was a, an agreement between the, one of the homeowners and the applicant to limit the amount of furniture to...
Chairs, two aderanda chairs and another bench.
I think it was three aderanda chairs and, and a bench. So, I'll include that in my...
What about the no electricity? They also...
They, yeah, but there was, no one really had a problem with that. The guy said that he didn't have a problem with that. He said that it wasn't going to be an issue. What was that, Walter?
It should be final six, I think, on the agenda. Instead of five-thirty?
Oh, five-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll make that change. I, I just don't...
It's not necessary to make that a condition of approval, but it's not proposed.
Right.
If they want to add it, they have to come back to you and...
Right. To be honest with you, even adding the chairs as a condition of approval is...
Chairs, that's different, yeah.
It's, but it is sort of silly, but I, since, I, yeah, I'm including it since it seemed as though there was, there was an agreement reached by them, so.
I will include it, but that's, I would second that.
Oh, wait. Uh, this application is approved based upon a finding that conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. The special permit revision is effective November eleventh, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Second.
So, that includes the aderanda chair agreement?
It includes the aderanda chair.
Good, good work.
Anybody here, uh, any, any comments for the comments discussion?
The only concern I had, Tom, was that the homeowner was concerned, and the applicant related his concerns, and, um, one was the thing.
All good? Okay. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving along.
I'll make the motion. Voted, at the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, approve a modification to a site, uh, to a special permit for Joseph Burian at sixty-five Highland Ave., map nine, lot forty-one, as shown on the application dated nine-twenty-sixteen, and on house renovation sixty-five Highland Avenue dated aki sixteen, prepared by Joseph Burian, architect. Uh, this application is approved based upon a finding that conforms with the zoning code. The special permit revision is effective on November eleventh, two thousand sixteen, and upon filing with the town clerk.
Second. This is, the guy's just putting it back right. I mean, it's crazy to have a set, uh, a rule that there's one bedroom downstairs and one bedroom upstairs, so. This is a condition on this, right?
Yeah, there wasn't any, any letters that I think we needed to incorporate into this.
They're just very favorable for the project. There's, there's no concern whatsoever on my part. They're just relieved that it's getting cleaned up and all. But they have a lot of rot in the wood that they're trying to correct, so their setting structure.
All right, um... Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And the last one we can move on tonight is Murphy.
Sure. I'll make the motion. Voted, Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, approve a CAM site plan modification for Kevin Murphy at three-twenty Vineyard Point Road, map five, lot thirty-three, as shown on an application dated nine-twenty-eight, two thousand sixteen, and, uh, zoning locations survey proposed spa dated September twelve, two thousand sixteen, prepared by La Feria Associates. This application is approved with the following conditions, that the memo from, uh, Kevin McGee regarding this application dated, uh, November first, with the two conditions on it be included. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut. Sorry.
Comments?
It seemed like he was improving the, uh, situation with the environmental concerns by moving the machinery back closer to the house. So, I think it's a good thing.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, and nobody opposed? Okay, applications to be received. Gretchen Granberry, two, uh, ninety-two Leets Island Road map, twelve, lot eighteen dash one, zone R five, special permit, applicant, application home handicraft industry studio for sewing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so this is going to be on the sixteenth and the twelve.
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry. Subdivision, uh, South Central Regional Water Authority, one-fifteen Grade Hill Road map, twenty-one lot twelve, zone R eight subdivision. Application to cut an eighty thousand, three-hundred-and-six square foot lot out of four-hundred-and-seventy-six acres. The property will contain house, septic, and well.
Is that makes the bulk standards for... Is that R eight up there?
Yes.
You mean, you mean four acres?
Yes, it's R eight.
We review that.
Cut out two or seven size lots.
This house is already there.
Yeah.
Well, we're just receiving it. So, we're just receiving it. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes of ten-nineteen?
Substantially correct.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, anybody have any comments on it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, and as much, oh, wait, do we have the other thing?
No.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Chairman, with no business further before the commission, I move that we, uh, close the, uh, meeting. Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting, everybody.
It's a meeting.